This meeting is being recorded. You have your microphones in front of you. Please make sure that the green dot is on. When we go on break, Mr. Brad Anderson has our master button to cut off audio. Speaking of break, there will be a one hour break from 10 to 11 this morning. That is so the Board of Directors may attend to Washington County business during that time period. And then we will resume at 11:05. So we're going to start up this morning with Michelle Rios with Blue Tiger Leadership, who will be facilitating a discussion on Chief Executive Officer and General Manager characteristics after a review with employee and board interviews. Then after the break, we will have our CFO Kathy Leader doing a fiscal year 25 year end financial report, followed by an update on the 2.0 cost of service study. Then we'll head into lunch. We have a short lunch today, just 30 minutes as we're trying to make up some time. And then we will go into a discussion on our design and construction standards and updates, forthcoming updates to those. At 2 o'clock, we'll have a discussion, survey work and be joined by DHM Research to go through some analysis with residential customer awareness, satisfaction and values. We'll have a brief break in the afternoon before we round third and head to home with board planning and discussion. So a very full day ahead of us. Thank you so much for your time and attention and sort of making allowances to pack a lot in today. And those are my announcements for the morning.
Can everybody hear? It doesn't seem like these are very loud or but.
The purpose of these microphones is to pick up audio, but it doesn't amplify.
Okay, so we need to make sure that people can hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so on to Michelle.
No, Madam Vice Chair, you want to say who's in the room?
Sure. Why don't we go around and introduce ourselves? Michelle, we'll start with you.
All right, Michelle Rios from Blue Tiger Leadership.
Joe Gall, Chief Utility Relations Officer for the District.
Pam Treese, and after Tuesday's FOPA, I am very happy to be here. And I'm District Two Director.
Good morning, Elizabeth Edwards, Chief of Staff for Clean Water Services.
Rick Shanley, interim CEO slash General Manager.
Kathy Leader, Chief Financial Officer for the District.
And Commissioner and Chief of Fire, Director for District Two, District One, District One.
Stay in your district.
Brad Anderson, Senior Assistant Legal Counsel.
Jason Snyder, Director for District Three.
Do you want to go outside the room as well? Outside the table here? No, we're fine, I guess. We're fine. Let's move forward. I think, Michelle, you are on tap.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Excuse me, just by the way, we do know that Director Willie is on his way. And we do know that Director Harrington is on her way. Is that correct?
We're working to confirm.
We're working on that. So, okay, we do have quorum, so we're moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Treese. Thank you, Director Fai, and thank you, Director Snyder. I appreciate having the opportunity to be here today after working with the CWS employees and doing discovery interviews to find out what are they looking for in their next CEO slash General Manager? I'd like to go through a presentation today that highlights the key findings.
And Michelle, while you pull that up, I'll just let the directors know they should now have a copy of the presentation and analysis in your packets.
Think about having multiple offices because I think you gave me in newer version, you gave it to Brendan, and I think I left it in the other office.
We are. Yeah, we're having a technical problem.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Failure. All right. Thank you. I will start with the executive summary. This report synthesizes findings from comprehensive discovery interviews across Clean Water Services with approximately 50 staff members, including the Employee Advisory Council, management staff across the organization, and members of the CWS Board of Directors during the month of October 2025. What we were looking at through the exploratory questions were critical leadership characteristics that the organization wants in their next leader, current organizational challenges, knowledge, skills and abilities and experiences needed to address those challenges, and the leadership competencies desired. And these were chosen from the Center for Creative Leadership's 91 Management and Executive Competencies. Key findings at a very high level, the most cited desires of the new leader were trust rebuilding skills, decision-making and accountability skills, communication and transparency, utility wastewater operational knowledge, and public sector experience. They also, there was a high level of discussion around non-micromanagement. When we look at the top 10 leadership priorities that were selected, four key characteristics came up: decision-making and accountability, communication and transparency, trust and integrity, empathy and emotional intelligence. And these form a crucial leadership picture of four legs of a stable table. And the number of people that, out of the 50, that mentioned these things is significant. 34 for decision-making and accountability, 31 on communication and transparency, 30 for trust and integrity, and 24 on empathy and emotional intelligence. I also asked what leadership characteristics did the staff want to avoid in the next leader? Micromanagement and control came up 11 times, self-interest and hidden agendas, arrogance and ego, unkindness and disrespect, and inaccessibility and absence. Some of the comments that were made, they asked for candidates who did not demonstrate controlling behaviors, my way or the highway types of things. Leaders that were focused on personal advancement over organizational goals, executives who believe they have all the answers or behaved as if they were the smartest person in the room, and leaders who were physically or emotionally unavailable to staff. These were the things they called out that they did not want. Most pressing organizational challenges by far had the largest amount of discussion and commentary. Trust rebuilding was the number one, 41 out of 50, which is highly significant. And it is the single most critical challenge as it is seen by the staff. There are two pieces of that trust. One is external trust, protecting and enhancing CWS reputation in the public. One of the comments was that we do excellent work for the community, but we're worried how people see us now. And so staff is asking that somebody, the next person that comes in really, really has an ability to rebuild that trust with the community and external partners. Then there's the internal trust piece, renewing faith and leadership. The erosion of trust has created a ripple effect through the organization. Staff don't just distrust individual decisions. They've begun to question whether leadership follows through on commitments. This breakdown has unfairly tainted even effective managers as skepticism has spread across the entire management structure. Multiple staff noted variations of this. We need leaders who do what they say they'll do and keep their promises. A second important challenge to the organization is financial stewardship and restoring confidence. And this wasn't just about balancing budgets. Staff described it as fundamental to restoring public trust. Multiple employees voiced concerns about how rate decisions are communicated and justified to the community. One theme emerged that they would like to demonstrate the value CWS delivers for every dollar collected. And they want a voice in that. Internal transparency matters as well. Staff expressed frustration with budget decisions that seemed opaque or disconnected from operational realities. They would like to have a voice in operational financial planning conversations and clearly connecting budget priorities to organizational goals. The data showed repeatedly that accountability and transparency aren't just external requirements, but they're necessary for internal credibility as well. There was much discussion about organizational stability and ending the cycle of disruption. Change fatigue was, came up multiple times throughout the conversations. People are tired, tired of change. There was discussion around the last three to five years being pretty tumultuous for staff. They really want, it's not that they are opposed to change, which of course with the new CEO, General Manager, they know there's going to be change, it's that they want change that has purpose and clarity and follow-through with sustainability factors. So not change for change's sake, but change for a clear purpose that sticks. Another piece of the information was around the stability paradox that it seems almost 50/50 split in employee tenure from 15 and above years of service and less than five years of service. And there is a growing gap between those two segments of the employee base because the tenured folks know how things have been done. The newer folks are thinking about the fresh perspectives, how could we do things? Is there a different way? How does AI play into the mix? All of the things that newer employees would be thinking about. There's a way to really create strength through that tension and bridge that gap that I think is an opportunity for the organization as well. And then the executive team gaps. Staff specifically noted weaknesses in the executive leadership structure, whether through departures, restructuring, or ineffective leadership. The teams surrounding the CEO or GM need strengthening. Staff want a leader who can assess executive talent honestly, make tough decisions about fit, and build a cohesive leadership team that operates with shared values and consistent messaging. They said, we need leaders who work together rather than against each other. And so when a CEO, the long-term CEO leaves, there can be this disruption in how everyone operates on the executive team and a challenge to understanding what is our foundation now, how do we operate together, what is next? And that is another opportunity for positive change. I asked about the skills, abilities, knowledge and experience needed to deal with these challenges that were offered. And 43 times, utility wastewater operations experience came up. Public sector government experience, 28 times, strong communication skills, 17, and financial management. Additionally, they talked about whoever comes in to have a deep understanding of wastewater treatment, stormwater management, the regulatory environment, and an engineering degree is not necessarily required, but the ability to understand the science and technical operations of the work is important. Public sector experience, understanding governmental restraints, working with elected officials, public accountability and civic relationships. Private sector candidates are not disallowed in their view, but they would like them to demonstrate transferable skills and understanding of how government works. They would also like someone with a proven track record, someone who's not a first-time CEO or GM, demonstrated success in similar-sized organizations with measurable results, and someone who has experience and success leading leaders, building teams, sustaining successful executive teams, someone with those types of characteristics. And then the last thing, I had folks take a look at the 91 competencies from Center for Creative Leadership's benchmarks framework. And these have emerged over the last 40 years as the competencies necessary for effective executive leadership. And these were the competencies that were chosen most frequently. Number one, acts ethically. Two, communicating effectively. Three, committed to making a difference. Four, listens. Five, offer sound judgment. Six, act systemically. Seven, change management. Eight, credibility. Nine demonstrates financial management skills. 10 demonstrates vision. 11, developing and empowering of employees. 12 makes decisions. 13 seeks broad business knowledge. 14 has self-awareness. 15 is able to strategically plan. And 16 values diversity. So recommendations from me based on the interviews that we had. Number one, there were some discussion about position title. I tried to stay away from that as much as possible and said often CEO, GM as one. However, staff strongly prefer General Manager over CEO. Multiple interviewees noted that CEO sends a corporate for-profit message that doesn't align well with CWS's public service mission. General Manager is the traditional utility naming convention and better reflects the organization's work and identity. Number two, executive structure. Consider creating a dual leadership structure such as General Manager and Assistant General Manager for these four reasons. And I understand that may have been a structure in the past. But it would bring succession planning right on the bench immediately. Continuity and reduced anxiety of leader exits. Again, folks are a little bit nervous because there have been several turnovers of leader, mostly in the last three years, but three to five. Number two, visibility and accessibility is increased both internally and externally, increasing trust. One person can't be everywhere at once. And there is a high need for building trust inside and outside the organization. Two individuals in these senior roles would offer that much easier. Supporting the improvement of the executive team challenges by providing cohesion presence, leader development, mentorship, and cross-accountability partnership of the GM AGM. So there'd be a nice baton handoff back and forth there that supports the executive team's foundation. And then this would also enable a focus on the critical needs of strategic and operational management by instituting role clarity and having clear responsibility of external and internal facing duties. This would also include that trust building we've talked about and allow the day-to-day management while someone is also trying to build trust with community partners and community folks. All while taking advantage of complementary skill sets. In a perfect world, you would have two people who had complementary but different skill sets to look inside and outside the organization. For the interview process design, I am recommending behavioral questions that specifically address micromanagement tendencies and leadership philosophy. Consider the executive assessment called the Hogan Leadership Forecast that will assess leadership style as it relates directly to the environment this executive will be in. That could be something that would be helpful. As well as on the Hogan Assessment, it would also give you a sense of this person's resilience and their personality characteristics that would be supportive to the organization. And then in the first 90 days, it's really important for visibility and accessibility that the new leader not to get bogged down in the to-dos and instead get out and make sure they are building relationship with the employee base. Really important. Go on a listening tour potentially, uncovering organizational history, current pain points. Some executive team assessment and team coaching. I think this is primary for the new leader to really be able to pull that executive team together. There's going to be a lot to do in a very fast amount of time. And the executive team is needed to help carry that voice out into the organization. To establish regular communication cadence across all staff, possibly town halls, updates, and making sure messages waterfall through all departments. I did hear a couple of times that at CWS, there is good communication, but it doesn't necessarily reach everyone all the time. So there are some microcultures in different departments that might not hear about things going on in the organization until a friend tells them or they see it in the paper or something like that. So this organization is small to medium, but fairly complex in terms of the diversity of talent and geographical separation and things like that. So communication is really, really key. And then potentially consider executive transition coaching in these types of situations. That has been helpful on a three-month timeframe to give that executive a place to discuss, brainstorm, strategize, that doesn't interrupt the relationship building of the executive team. So there's no pairing up or, you know, kind of, it could look like sidelining, building relationships in a way that's unhealthy to the organization. So someone outside that they can speak with. One last thing, two last things. Success metrics, really looking at improved staff engagement scores, trust index improvement, executive team organizational effectiveness assessment, and progress on this back-to-basics idea. And this comes into this cross-organizational opportunity I found. Almost across the board, this term back-to-basics was discussed. And I asked several people, what does that mean to you? And there were different definitions of what it meant. But I see it as an opportunity for the organization to really rally around a goalpost and pull together representatives across the organization to come together, define the term, and potentially create a roadmap to implement whatever this means to them. But it's already pretty deeply in the culture. And so it's, rather than try to change it, maybe it's a way to. My very last comments here. The Clean Water Services Board selection of the next CEO or GM will define CWS trajectory for the next decade. Staff members shared candid insights about what the organization needs and what it cannot afford in its next leader. Their perspective matters. They understand the organization's operational realities. They'll be responsible for executing the new leader's vision, and their trust must be earned and sustained to do so. This report reflects their candor, wisdom and passion for getting this right. On behalf of the staff, I would like to say thank you to the board for your investment and listening and elevating their voices in this important recruitment process.
I have a question.
Sure. Chair, I just, I just want to announce for everybody that might be listening that both Commissioner, Director Willie and Chair Harrington have joined us. We started before you got here.
Yeah, we got in at about quarter till nine. You say here in this last slide, it's not yet projected, twice at least, and you've said both verbally and in other slides, staff, staff, staff. Yet, in the executive summary, you talked about members of the board also being interviewed. So did you exclude the board responses from all of your report out? And everything that you're reporting here is just on staff? Or is it you're reporting out on the interview set?
It's the staff answers to the interview set.
So it's both?
So, so the board is, I did the interviews for the board. They were separated out. And the, the feedback here is from the staff.
Got it. Thank you.
That was actually going to be, I guess, one of my questions is, was there any difference or this? And maybe you were planning to have this discussion, but was there any noticeable difference you saw between what you were hearing from board members and what you were hearing from the staff and leadership team?
Very.
Important for us to know that.
Yeah, very slightly. And part of that is the internal operations of what the employees see and hear and navigate on a daily basis. And then the distance from that for the board, I think that the, some of the information here is probably illustrative for the board that maybe previously you didn't see. So that, that would be the one, the one piece that I would say is.
And why the, that answer to that question is important to me is ultimately the hiring decision is the board's. And we're the ones around this table making the decision. Just as we have done with our Washington County hires, we have had employee panels and employee management input to us. But it is just that. They don't make a recommendation. They just provide input. And we're the decision makers. So I value this input a lot. But I want to make sure all throughout this process that we have clarity. That's all. Thank you for your question, Commissioner Snyder. I'm just, for the remainder of this topic, I'm going to remain just as a participant. And with the next topic, we can switch over.
Okay, I'm happy to have you jump in here. So, okay. Okay. Are there any other questions? Director Willie.
Well, yes, and I apologize that I was late this morning. I thought it was a trick question when I read the agenda and it said 9 o'clock. And then the meeting started at 8:30. I thought, I called, called Joe and said, is this a trick question? Are we starting at 8:30?
So as opposed to me, who is just like, what, I, you know, we can't be starting a meeting before nine. It's Friday.
Well, it's not like we don't have a lot of meeting hours this week already. But anyway, so thank you, Joe, for answering your phone and clarifying that. I do apologize and should read my, my phone alerts closer because they were telling me to get out of there and get to my meeting. I'm going, no, 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 that's right. Anyway.
I can relate.
So great information. I really, I really want to have opportunity to read this again and absorb this. But a couple of things jumped out at me. Change fatigue in the last three to five years. I think we're all experiencing change fatigue. COVID did that to all of us. But are they specifically talking about the organizational structure? Because, I mean, obviously, the issues that CWS has been going through is in the last year.
Yeah, but remember the COO departure in 2022, the Chief of Staff retirement, and I can't remember what, what's her name was doing.
I can see her.
Yeah, I can see her face, short hair. Can't remember the name.
Nora.
Nora, yes, Nora Curtis. So we had a whole bunch of retirements and some unexpected departures as well. That seemed like an inflection point to me in 2022. So it really has been going on, at least a lot of turmoil since 2022. And Diane started as the CEO. She was the first ever hired CEO by the prior board in, in August, September, 2018. So it has just been a change process overall of that.
And if I might add to that, that it's, it's, I, the vision I have is kind of like Domino's. So as leaders exit, there is a shuffling of leadership. And most recent, that people are stepping forward into roles as Rick has stepped forward, each of the folks that needed to stepped forward as well. So that creates tension and that tumultuous feeling of who's, who's in charge, who's making the decisions? Who do I report to?
There's also been, did you?
No, go ahead.
There's also been organizational change and leadership identification with Chief Such-and-Such. And I think that there's messages sent through, through that process as well that must agitate a bit in terms of change.
I guess from our perspective, we've communicated, we, the board, the Budget Committee have communicated that redesigning the org structure every year is getting tiresome for us and hard to track. I don't know that the employees actually see that. I don't know that the employees actually see that. Maybe they do because they feel like, okay, last year I was in this department, now I'm in this department, or the structure's changed. So what, in, in the conversation we have scheduled for today, what, where do we go next? Because I don't want to jump ahead and just start asking a bunch of questions. I would like to hear from, from Rick and Elizabeth and Joe and Kathy, their perspective of this. I'm assuming you've had more time than I to embrace, read and absorb this information.
Well, but also remember, one of the, the main reason why we did this is to inform the recruitment early in the process. So it isn't, this is a gift from the standpoint of managing the organization with feedback, you know, over, between now and, and for the remainder of the fiscal year, I'll just say that. But the main reason why we've done this is to inform our recruitment process. And so your question, I think, is very appropriate for understanding how this feedback can and will be utilized in the recruitment process. And we're very early in putting together the, the job brochure for that recruitment process.
Yeah, and I, I think that's kind of the, you raced to the end.
Okay.
I would, I would like to hear the feedback from the executive team, if I can call you that, on this. And, and I guess just some things that jumped out on me is when you went to the core competency. To me, core competency would say, do you have the expertise to do this job? I don't see that. Number one is act, act ethically. That wouldn't be my number one choice. So it's interesting, this perspective. So I guess that's why I'm asking what, what you guys are all thinking about here. I mean, you know, we all want that to be ethical in our decision-making, but core competency might be different things. So anyway, I'll shut up and ask for other input.
And these answers are based on most wanted core competencies for the leadership role specifically.
Because that, you're, you're referring to Slide 12 in particular?
Well, it's on page nine in the information.
Executive summary.
The top sixteen competencies.
Yeah, so it's the same as.
Yeah, it was the same as that, what was that?
So, I mean, those, Michelle, just to give more context, that, that is, as I heard you present that, that is, these are the top competencies for organizations overall when they're trying to hire a leader, right? These were not, please, that's what I thought I heard you say when you presented them.
They were actually offered to look at 91 competencies for managers and executives that are known by research to be the most effective competence.
People chose these.
Yes.
In our organization.
Yes.
Okay. But the important context there is that these are generalized competencies from a list of 91. They're not, this is not specific to a wastewater utility or even an organization that does technical work. These are just like.
Management and executive effectiveness competencies.
So Jerry, I don't know if that helps you with.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification or differentiation between what I was thinking this was versus what it actually is. But yeah, this is, this is eye-opening information.
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to say Jerry had asked for feedback from the executive staff. But can you hold until they provide that?
Well, how are we doing on time? Per the agenda. Okay. And I will just share the presentation and analysis. Michelle wanted to hold until this morning, and so the staff has not had additional time with it. We are.
Oh, really?
Yes. Yeah.
So I was assuming that I was the last one to get this.
So we're today, this morning, maybe.
We're on even footing this morning.
And this information will be included in an updated packet online as well.
And I'm also giving a presentation to the Employee Advisory Council next week to share this information.
Will, Rick, will the executive leadership team be discussing this? Has that been in your plans or are you just expecting to take it to the Employee Advisory Committee?
It's not in our plan as of now. I haven't been approached with that as an idea or an option. My only involvement has been just as other staff to participate in the survey, answer questions.
For the purpose of.
For the purpose of informing the recruitment and, you know, informing the board, basically.
I would like to know what, when, when the leadership team, including Rick, have had an opportunity to look at this. I would like to have that question answered, but I don't think today is the right.
And the time needs to fit within the recruitment process.
Yep, we would need that timely.
You know, I think it might be helpful too, if we just take a step back and look at the genesis of this and, and why we started with this employee feedback. And I believe Catherine and I attended the, was it all staff or?
All leaders.
All leaders, thank you. And there was a request for employee feedback. That doesn't mean that that was the only reason we did this.
That wasn't the main driver for this exercise.
Exercise. I just want to point out that that was part of what, of what we heard as we were going through that change process. And it was a, that meeting, if I remember correctly, was also pretty close on the heels of Diane's departure and intended to be an opportunity to talk with the leaders about what was going on. Am I correct about that?
It was in, I think, June.
So right after.
But I want to repeat, that was not the genesis of this. The genesis of doing this was solely the recruitment.
Yeah, that meeting is there to be a, I mean, it's a listening session of sorts is what you saw us do. It was wide open. Here, here's, here's where we're at today, you know, where it was an effort to begin that process of rebuilding trust. And we had a Q and A and folks were, we had not done that before, frankly, in one of those meetings. It was more training oriented. That was more of a listening session component. And the next meetings that we do will also have that same type of component.
Great. So we still, maybe I've just forgotten. But I think it would be useful to come back to the board with the skeletal process for the recruitment.
And Mr. Faihat, a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for sure.
It's a big room, so you're going to have to talk a little louder. These don't, these don't.
Oh, yeah, we were just talking, yeah.
You just have to project.
I will turn, Michelle, thank you for this presentation. I really enjoyed hearing about the, the staff's thinking into what the next CEO should look like or next general manager. I just wanted to go to the recommendations that you were, you're making this morning and expresses one commissioner here that I too share the confusion around general manager/CEO. And I think, like, I think we need to, it's a time that we pick one title. So I do, and I, you know, I hear the staff preference, preferences, the general manager over the CEO. And I'm happy to support that and go with that and say, it makes sense, general manager. And, and along that, you're, you're recommending that we also have an assistant general manager. I think of right now, if I were to point who that general manager, I usually say the Chief of Staff, right? So I think it, it's important that we streamline. And, and from the world, we operate the five of us elected Chief of Staff. Makes sense, but it may not make sense on the corporate side. So I'm, I think it's time that we streamline that for the future.
Well, I think we'll have to look at it from the standpoint of not just a job title, but what are the responsibilities? Because when Diane was hired into the organization, she was the Deputy GM. Okay? And then, and Mark Jocker's title was different, I think, under Bill Gaffey. And then under Diane's leadership, she put in a whole set of titles that we, some of which we continue to have today. So in, in hiring, as we've talked about in some other meetings, in bringing in a new leader, we have to be open to that leader wanting to ensure that there is a structure that will lead to longer-term sustainability. And so it isn't on us to impose an organizational structure, much like we experienced in hiring Ms. Angie.
But we can say it's a priority to have the.
Clarity.
Yeah. 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 Thank you, Chair. But for me, I'm just saying, like, while we may not want to oppose, but I think it's important we listen as a board, we, it's important we listen to the staff and appreciate the feedback. And I don't know when we make that change, is it like, do we advertise or like?
It's something that we, as a board, will need to make decisions on as part, so that the job description is clear.
Like what is the title of the job?
What is the title of the job? And I think, and then same thing for, yeah, I think when you were talking about the Assistant General Manager, I was thinking about the deputy title, usually that's better clarity. But then there is a culture that exists on the other side of the hat we wear as five members here, which is the county side. And they do actually have Assistant County Administrators. And that title is pretty clear. And the roles and responsibility is something that was recently created, I think, by Tanya. So I, I'm just saying there's an alignment in where you're heading in terms of this board members and then the other role they, they embody in different days and times. And then the, the, everything underneath, I'm in support. In terms of the interview process, one thing that caught my attention, and I think we could probably have a bit more discussion, and I don't know, are you leading the, the recruitment process as well? Okay, so you recommended, then, if you're not, that maybe we can have this conversation. You recommended the Hogan Leadership Forecast to assess leadership. You say a bit more about this, what do you envision this to look like?
So there's an assessment, the Hogan Leadership Forecast Assessment, that will give information around a leader's effectiveness, capability, personality, and resilience as it relates to the actual role and the environment they will be in, will be operating in. And it can just, just help give some more data to the candidates that are put forth.
Okay.
And Director Fai, I should share that Heather Gans with Raptelis Recruiting is in the room listening to this conversation. She will be leading the recruitment side. So this is part of the, the handoff or overlap.
From a consultancy standpoint, Commissioner Treese and I have been the two on point thus far to put a recruitment process together. We're still very early in those stages. We wanted to first gather feed, this feedback from this interview process, both from the board and from staff. And as, as Elizabeth Edwards mentioned, secure the consultancy resources. So now, as a result of both of these two milestones coming together, we will be regrouping and working with Raptelis to put together a clearer process. And so we can do that over the course of the next several weeks and come back to the board, hopefully in December, when Commissioner Willie is back.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yes.
Sorry. I thought it was interesting that they could differentiate general manager from CEO. And general manager does, to me, much more refer to what Clean Water Services is than CEO. So I, I thought that was interesting that they did that. And then you mentioned that this is going to the Employee Advisory Committee or you're meeting with them. Could you tell me more about that committee? Who's the makeup of that committee and what's the expectation?
Clean Water Services Advisory Commission? Employee Advisory Council. Elizabeth, I'll let you take that.
So the Employee Advisory Council is made up of membership from across the organization. It's actually established geographically. As Michelle alluded to, we may be a small to medium in size, but we are fairly complex when it comes to how distributed across different locations we are, and that results in different climates. So the Employee Advisory Council is about 20-plus individuals with representatives from all of our various locations across the district, a mix of represented and non-represented employees.
How do you get on it?
Individuals apply, and they serve, I believe, two-year terms.
And ideally, all of them should have participated, hopefully.
They were invited to.
Yeah, I think we did get most of them.
Yes. Less of them.
So this is another example, just like this phrase, "all leaders", where employees may be pretty aware of what this group is and its charter and does, but your board isn't on that journey on the same basis. So when we talk about it here in presentations, you need to continuously reinforce what that body is, who the membership is.
We should clarify that. We, we are no longer using the term "all leaders". We're calling it supervisors. That's a much more understandable term. And frankly, we have folks that are leaders that are not supervisors. So I had a fundamental.
Is that, has that been changed in all of the policy?
I don't know where it would.
Oh, we saw it labeled in policies that we were informed about earlier this year, so.
Need to go back and check on that.
Good question, Rick. Supervisors only or are they supervisors and managers as well?
It would generally be both.
Yeah, so supervisors and managers.
Anybody that supervises staff is what we're putting in the supervisor category or supervisory group.
So what's the, what's the feedback communication? How's that process go from the EAC to the executive team, to the board of directors? How do we hear from them?
With regard to this specific project or in general?
In general, and, you know, I'm assuming they're going to give us feedback about this process as well, so.
So I'll start with this specific. And we, in an effort to get staff feedback, the EAC was a very good representative group because we were able to reach across the entire organization and have a mix of representative, non-represented employees. We used Michelle to help facilitate that conversation, to get their input. And then that rolls into this report that you all just received, that we all are just receiving, that then is obviously going to the board and to leadership. In, under other policy issues that come up, I should say the EAC is still a relatively new group within the last five years. So some of those muscles we're building. But they will come and present to the formerly Sage and now the ELT on policy recommendations that they're hearing about. I also serve as the ELT connector. So I will sit in on their meetings and help to elevate issues to my colleagues at the leadership table. And then as appropriate, issues will bubble up to the board, whether it's through email communication, leadership announcements, those kinds of things.
So I think what's important to reinforce, if you go back to the second slide on the presentation, is Michelle did an excellent job, as we've seen here, both in the slides and when we have a chance to read the document more fully. But all of the board members were invited to participate in this, the full membership of the Employee Advisory Council and all of the management-level staff in the organization. And this report out encapsulates. And this report out encapsulates the feedback that Michelle has reported on. And so, part of reflecting back is, this information is now part of the packet. Michelle will be doubling back with the Employee Advisory Council, so they can see that their input has been heard. And you, you've asked here today, it go, just one board member said it, but I think many of us were nodding our heads. We would like to know or ensure that at least the ELT has the opportunity of a presentation of this information and equal sense of feeling heard. But we are going to, as a board, take this gift and utilize it as part of our recruitment process.
Yes. Thank you, Chair.
You know, I, I think, Rick, you probably have a game plan on the operations side or who to get input and how to diffuse this information to, or disseminate to the employees. But I will say that I think, as a former member of the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission, I, I, they make recommendations to the board as well and around Clean Water Services. So, I do think it's important that you run by them, because the CEO or the general manager we hire is directly interacting with that group of people. And when I'm on it, the two people I interacted were the CEO and Mark Jockers, when he was a Public Affairs Manager or Director versus when he was a Chief of Staff as well. So, being on those journeys, I think it's important we run by them and have buy-in and feedback, so that it could come back to the board as well, or at least go back to the two, the Chair and the Commissioner leading the recruitment efforts.
Well, once again, for clarity, this is not something for them to act on. This is input and feedback that we, the board, ask for in order to inform our recruitment. So, there is no policy being developed. There is no organizational program that fits the CWAC Charter. So.
No, I'm merely asking for them to react and say, you know, you, many of them have been there for quite some time, to just say, "Here what we've heard from the staff. You've been here with the, the whole debacle of Clean Water Services, and you've been here before that debacle. Here's what we're hearing from staff. What's missing? What do you think?" And I think it's, that, that includes how we build trust as well. It's part of the journey of building the trust for Clean Water Services. So, I'm not recommending any new changes, Chair, but I'm merely saying that, you know, if we truly are going to build a trust with the community, we have to run this by the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission and at least say, "What do you think? What's missing?" And even if they say, "Oh, this is great. We think of this," just like I did, I can agree with the staff here and there. So, it's a blessing. So, that's what I was asking. And I think it isn't a board decision. I think it's a decision for the CEO probably could make, because we don't dictate what gets on that agenda. But I, as a one-member, value the, the community members that are giving their time and energy and skills to Clean Water Services to let us know, you know, or at least give them the opportunity to review, give an inside view of what the staff are thinking in this issue. So, that's what I was recommending or suggesting them.
Just for the sake of the public, CWAC is advisory to the board, not just the CEO.
Commissioner Treese, are there any other comments?
Did you have any comments you wanted to share? I'm just noting that we didn't give you a chance.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank Michelle for this work. I, I know it was exhaustive. I do have one question about the slide that's up right now. And that is, are, are those ranked by the, by the number of responses by the interviewees?
Yes, and in priority order.
Okay. And, and can you give me one more time, a timeframe about when these questions were asked? And I'm getting to the question that Director Willie had about acts ethically. You know, I think that we were at a point where there were ethics were right in front of our face. And I'm wondering if that timing influenced that choice as well.
It was throughout the month of October.
Okay. So, it was later.
Yeah, we'd gone through the gauntlet already.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Michelle. And like I said, this is, I think this is helpful. And I'm looking over at Heather Gans and thinking that this will be, this will be part of the, the process of defining the recruitment along with the committee that's formed to do that. So, thank you. Any other comments?
Just that this was very helpful from my perspective. I think it is important to put in context. And there are things in this that are both exactly what I've, I would have expected and other things that are surprising or lightbulb moments for me a little bit. So, I, I appreciate it from that perspective as well.
All righty. Can you move on?
Great. Thank you again, Michelle. And seeing the time, it's 9:35. We do have a meeting that we need to get to at 10:00 AM. Yeah. And so, Elizabeth and I were just conferring on the agenda. If the board is willing and Kathy Leader is able, if we could do the year-end financial report now, we will have to scurry for 10 o'clock. Are we doing that here or in a different room?
We have another room set up for you.
Okay. Is that like right across the hall or?
It's, it's on the other wing. So, it'll be about a two-minute walk.
Same level, but on the other wing. Okay. Great. So, we just need to watch the time.
So, and just for information purposes, I will not be joining you at 10 o'clock. I'm going to jump on to the Forest Trustlands Advisory Meeting with the Board of, or the Department of Forest Street from 10 to 11 as well. So, I will need to be in a different room.
Different hotel room.
Thank you, Vice Chair Treese, for running that prior topic.
Ready to go?
What's wrong, Kathy?
Now, I'm going to mine.
Oh, got it.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Kathy Leader, Chief Financial Officer for the District. Today, I'm giving an informational update on the results of operations for Clean Water Services for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. You're familiar with this format of this presentation. We're going to be looking at revenues collected as a percent, as a percentage of budget for the year, then looking at expenditure spent, and giving the results of operations for the district for this, for that fiscal year. Justin. First, we're going to look at revenue collected. This slide gives you a five-year look at our revenue by quarter collected. As you can see from the trending, we are, we have consistently, you're, you're been in line with trending on revenue collected. When you look at the, the dark blue line, that is the current fiscal year 2025, we're talking about year-end ending. So, very similar to past years. And we ended the quarter at 102% of revenue collected as a percentage of budget. I do want to note that that app, so the three-year average that shows up down there at the bottom of that scale, it, that average is 101%. And I apologize, the number in your booklet is not correct. It's pointing from the wrong field. But 101% is the collection average rate. So, we ended the year in line with budget and historical trend.
Not the 104. It's.
Yeah, not the 104. The 101 is, is correct. The revenue in line with, with budget and historical trending. For expenditures for the quarter, similarly, five-year history for you there. The dark blue line and far right is the current year activity going through to where we ended the year for June 3, 2025, at 85% of budget spent. This is in line with our trending at 79% spent. We're actually spending higher and releasing our budget. And we'll talk a little bit about that. It really relates to the capital component of our budget.
So, Kathy, if I could clarify, going back to the prior one, based upon your articulating the 85 for the quarter, 101, the blue line here says 102, yet you're saying it should be 101.
No, no, sorry. The average, the three-year average that shows up there at the bottom of your chart, that right now shows up 104.
Okay.
That is not correct.
So, the packet is, either has been or will be updated with the correct slide that you're showing.
You can, yes, we definitely do that.
We can, we always have to update the packet with what has been shown.
Yeah.
If it hasn't changed, great. But if it has changed, the packet needs to be updated.
Okay. Yeah. And so, just for clarity, the results of operations for the quarter, it had not changed. It's 102% of revenue budgeted.
Okay. That has not changed. I was trying to find the number as you were articulate, verbalizing it, and I just got lost. Thank you.
Once again, percentage spent in line with budget and historical trending, actually spending at a higher rate. So, overall, results of operations for 2025, on the revenue side, service fees, revenue collected, increased by 8.7 million or 5.4% compared to the prior year. And this is in line with our 4% rate increase that happened in that year and growth that we historically have seen with, so increases in EDU and issue, so the, the bill rates.
So, this is where, when I saw this slide, I had to remind myself, just as you have on the second slide, that this is fiscal year 25 Q4.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I had to stop and think, okay, what?
Yeah, because we have so much planning and reporting going on. We really need that self-reinforcement. Sorry.
No, no, no. Thank you. And for industrial revenue, we, the collections were 18.9 million in total revenue for industrial. You know, we bill all industrial customers within our service area. That went up 1.8 million or 10.5% compared to the prior year. I do have a question into our Source Control and Environmental Service on that, just because it is more than just flow going on there and rate increase. So, I'm interested in looking at why that has happened. But we did see an increase in industrial revenue.
And, and your question to them, is that, does that include growth, new, new?
Yeah. So, I would like to see, because it's not flow. So, is it concentration? Is it, you know, yeah, changes in, in how they discharge? I'm interested in looking at that. So, I am looking at that.
So, what did, what did we budget as a percentage increase? Because I remember us having the conversation about when we pass the budget, we're going to raise rates X. We expect that to generate X of dollars.
Yeah.
So, how does this compare?
Yeah. On the industrial side, we usually have it match with just the rate increase itself. And we don't really, just to be conservative, we don't try to anticipate flow changes or concentration or, or change in treatment.
Right. So, my question is, the 10.5% that is actual, how did that compare to what we put in our budget as projected?
It's a lot more.
It is. Yeah. So, 4%, is what we projected. So, we took our, our 24 actuals, our estimated 24 actuals when we did our budget, and increased them by 4% to get to our 25 recommendation.
And this is just for one quarter?
No, this is the year. So, this is how we ended the year.
Okay.
Yeah. So, Q4 is kind of telling you that story of year end.
Well, that's the interesting thing, because on the prior slides, you're reporting both on the quarter and the three-year average. But here, you're going to Q4 results of operation.
So, just to explain the graph better, when you look at this year and you look quarter by quarter, it's cumulative. So, Q, that's why you go 20.
Q1 in yellow, Q2 in green, Q3 in red.
No, no, that's year. That's year.
Oh, year over year. That's right.
So, your Q1 is the first quadrant, 25% collected. Q2 cumulative, 150. Q3, 75%. And Q4, that's the year.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's not just the quarter, but it's year end?
Yes.
Okay.
And for assisted development charges, we collected a total of 22.9 million. That was an increase of 3.7 million or 19.3% compared to the, the prior year. And this is a revenue source I talk about every year, that it's hard to predict because it really depends on development that happens within not only our incorporated areas, but the cities themselves. And we have seen in the last couple of years, Beaverton, Hillsborough, and Tiger have seen some large development in their, in their area. So, that did go up.
As expected with UGB expansion development.
So, now, looking at year-end results of operations on the expenditure side, labor costs increased by 7.6 million or 12.5% compared to the prior year. And you know, that reflects, in the budget, we had 12 FTE add during that year in 20, in 25. You know, every year, we, the labor is impacted by the pay-for-performance, any benefit cost increases. And then, of course, class and comp, they did not wrap, those all impact that labor cost increase.
And coal is rolled in there as well.
For material services, they increased by 3.3 million or 7.7% compared to the prior year. And this reflects our anticipated increases. We saw that not only in the budget and how we budgeted, but also in our mid-year contingency transfers that we did, that there were some anticipated costs that were going to come in higher than prior years. And those really related to software maintenance, electricity, chemicals, joint utility billing and consulting costs. And natural systems, they moved some of their stewardship programs out of the capital program into operate. So, it impacted that. Chalm Services. For capital costs, they totaled 91.1 million. That's an increase of 6.2 million over the prior year of 7.3%. And just really reflects not only the budget that we had anticipated, some larger capital projects happening, but that we were delivering on those. And it should be noted that this year, this is the second year that we've seen these larger capital expenditures going on in those programs. You remember, it started out, it was maybe 50, 60 million. They've been solely jumping up, but last year's 84 million. This 25 was 91 million. So, this is an area where we are starting to spend in this project.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, from my standpoint, again, sometimes percentages, using percentages of increase are not an accurate communication. So, for example, if you go back up to the previous one, the results of operations on revenue side, it says industrial revenues that were up 10.5%. Well, that's, that's a million eight. So, the number, it's, it's kind of like, people were saying, "The library levy is going up 40%." And I'm going, but that's, you know, from one to two is 100%. So, keep that in mind, smaller numbers. That's kind of what this is with a.
It's part of the picture.
Yeah. We budgeted 17 million, and we came in at 18.9. That's like jiemungus. So, anyway, that percentage to me told a wrong story. And, and same thing with system development. That's okay. I get it.
Well, I think what might help us on this slide is, you are reporting accurate information, but the context of what we had projected with the adopted budget, having those two together helps us with context.
Yeah, because like I said, if we go from 17 to 18.9, it's not a big deal. But 10.5% says something else. And then, the second thing is, so if I took the increased revenues, the 8.7, 1.8, and 3.7, added them up and deducted the expenses side of things of 7.6, 3.3, and 6.2, would that be a fair comparison? Because it's. Because it still shows that we, we had higher increase in costs than we got in higher increase in revenues.
Yeah, other than these are all the expenditures or all of the revenues. This is, this is looking at some key areas. So debt services isn't in here, right? And some of the other income investment, this is just looking completely at operational budget.
But that was the comparison I want. You know, the cost of our bond costs and those kinds of things, that's a fixed number. And the interest income, we don't throw that in operations.
But as long as we remember that with the capital cost side, that we've been building up reserves for the anticipated five-year spend out. So it, it really is the, what was put into action is in, that's where the, as expected, right? Or as projected in the adopted budget.
Right.
Yeah, and I think one thing that tells a story, when you look at the amount spent, this, this slide is where you're looking at budget to actual. This is where you're seeing that, how do we compare to budget? And I really want to show in there that although our percentage spent is in line, look at how much our cost increase has gone over time, too. You know, we went down to 150 million to over 200, to 200 million, just so you can see that, too, that appears. So considering those two.
The, the one thing Kathy that I have to remind myself, when I hear the word cost, we've, given that we're the board for both agencies, we've been living, Washington County does have capital costs as well. But just yesterday, we had an all-day roundtable with our financial forecast and the cost of personnel, the cost increase drivers of inflation, inflation, inflation is very much on our mind. So that's why I mentioned with capital costs, yes, we have inflation there, too. But what I have to remind myself continuously is we have a capital investment plan. And we, we make big investments, but at different levels year over year. So that's the line item where I remind myself that it may be bigger numbers because, you know, building a new train is different than a lane mile or something like that. Sorry, I'm dwelling too much. You're doing great.
I think I hit on the, on the capital cost, 91, yeah, I mentioned that's 91, but 1 million. That's an increase of 6.2 million. It's showing that trajectory of our planned increase in capital spend, and that it is occurring.
Yep, and I want to underscore also with, with the information that you gave us in ABC, the agency worked hard in putting together the proposed budget, and we worked together on the adopted budget. And you have been performing to the adopted budget and the need of the agency in line with board direction and support. Thank you.
And just a reminder, and these, these numbers, these are unaudited numbers. We're still in the process of our year-end audit, just as an awareness. You know, in our, we continue to focus on staff recruitment and delivery of the planned capital investments. And the results of operations overall, just an awareness, at year-end, the non-restricted reserves, the reserves available for operating and capital projects increased by 8.5 million. But I do want to make a note of something that has changed in '25. And that is that we had, we needed to do our full $75 million transfer from sanitary to the construction fund because, to have alignment for the next year of capital projects. That's the first time we've had to do the full transfer out of sanitary. And that's the trending of these large capital projects that are running. And the result of that was that reserves in sanitary went down by 7 million in this year. That's the first time we've seen a reduction. And that's what we anticipated would happen as we did these larger projects.
Per intended plans.
Yeah.
So.
Were you surprised to see the non-restricted reserves growth?
I, I was a little, but, but you know, we.
How do you account for it, maybe is a better question?
Vacant positions, we haven't filled, that budget component, we haven't spent, right? But that, that number's gone down quite a bit. I mean, you've seen years where that was at, you know, 25 million, right? 40 million. So this is showing us, you know, budgeting and spend in alignment with rate increases.
So two quick questions, and then I'll shut up for a minute. So did we or did we not bond to 75 million?
Not yet, you would know, we'd have to come to you and ask for that.
Okay, well, because I, that statement there, number four, wasn't clear to me. It sounded to me like we didn't.
Oh, so let me clarify that. That 75 million was a budget transfer in '25. So every year, we budget transfers between the funds to meet their operations. And capital and debt always get a transfer from their operating funds. So sanitary or storm, move money into a construction fund to help fund construction. We budget that every year. This is the first year we've had to do our full transfer we budgeted.
Okay. And then the second question is, how many positions do we still have open?
I don't know on that.
Good.
It usually runs around 50, but I don't know.
Okay.
We can give you that list.
Well, I can go back to my budget book and see what we were looking at then, but yes. I defer to you.
No, no, I'm just.
Want to be chair.
Before you go off that slide, the, the increase in non-restricted reserves, that's also, just to be clear, that's also reflective of, like, the revenue collection being higher than expected, general, general rate, correct?
Yeah, revenue being higher than expected and then expenditures being lower.
It's both.
Real quick, key takeaways?
Key takeaways are that revenue collections were strong in that year, and we are spending capital in alignment with our budget.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you for the report out. At this juncture, we're going to pause our CWS meeting. And we have an Association of Oregon Counties meeting in another room. And Commissioner Willie has another county-related meeting. And we will reconvene back here at 11:05. Thank you. So we're reconvening in the, yes, that's what I was about to say. We're reconvening in the Clean Water Services Board of Directors Work Session. Everyone needs to turn the light on the mic, please. Someone is fetching Commissioner Willie right now out of the county meeting. And the other four board members have left the other Association of Counties meeting. So we will pick back up on our agenda. We have the topic of the Cost of Services Study 2.0. So take it away, staff, please.
Thank you, Chair Hareton Bart, Kathy Leeder, Chief Financial Officer for the district. Today, we're going to provide a update to the board.
Remote's not working at the moment.
It's not. If we're working on, there we go. Okay, okay. Okay, so just an overview of what we're going to be presenting today. We're going to give everybody an introduction to the Cost of Service Study. For some of you, you're familiar with it. You've seen some presentations on it. But for some of the board members, this is a new topic for you. We're going to talk about the background of the cost allocation process and then give an update on a summary of findings as we develop our new Cost of Service Study. And then what next steps are going to happen as part of this. And just as an awareness, there were previous discussions on this topic back in April of 2022 at a board work session, and then also in December of 2022 at a board work session. We've also presented this information to the member cities in the past. So as an introduction to the study, we started our initial update to the study in 2021. As part of that initial look, we started looking at what services are provided for sanitary sewer, what services are provided for stormwater management, and also within that, what services are regional and what services are local. The last time we did a level look at this, did a look at this was back in 2008.
But the board had also gotten a report out on a Cost of Service Study since we were on the board in 2019.
So just an awareness of how, so the presentation and how they've gone during this update is the strategy team at the district presented an update to the board based on 2023 budget numbers. So that was budget numbers that were the basis of that allocation study. That study was brought then to finance in 2024. We took over the continuation of this process. And we developed our framework that we're presenting today based on 24 actuals. So it's actual data that we're reporting on. The final outcome of this study will be the development of our financial planning and rate development going forward.
Oh, okay. This is what is reminding me. Okay, so there was a Cost of Service Study in 2008. That, you're correct, I'm catching up. We initiated another Cost of Service Study in 2021. And we, you took the board through that in the 23, 22, 23 timeframe. So now this is another update to that.
Correct, correct. And 23.
Confusing amount of terminology.
And 23, for clarity, was based on budget numbers. And you'll see that there's, there's a difference in that. And 24 is based on actuals, is that saying?
And just to give. Because the reason why this is important to me, and I keep coming back to it, is because the board gave direction that before we enter in this new age of IGAs, which we're now in the middle of, we wanted the Cost of Service Study to be improved beyond the 2008 study. That's why I see it as three junction points, and we're now in the third junction point.
Yeah, clearly makes, yes. So felt it was important to step back and just remind everybody about how we define our services between regional and local, just because that really speaks to, when we did the study, how services done in the operating units was divvied up between those categories. And so on the regional side, those are construction, operation, and maintenance of the treatment plants, the sewage pump stations, and the pressure lines. It's also the design and maintenance of sewer lines 24 inches and larger. Similarly, it's that compliance and oversight of our National Pollutant Discharge and Elimination System, or NPEDs, as people might know it, permit, including the municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4. So that compliance and reporting related to that. Also, within regional, when you're looking at the storm, the stormwater management program, it's this, and sewer, it's maintaining these minimum stream flows for water temperature and quality. And then service area restoration enhancement of stream corridors, all related to that water flow. So that's your regional look. For local services, so these are the services. So regional are provided for all of our customers within Washington County that are billed. These local services are services that we, the district, provide to unincorporated Washington County and some of our other member cities that we build directly for. This, the other, the cities that do their own billing, they also do a local program that sets their own rates related to that. But when you're looking at our local services, that's supporting that construction, maintenance, and operation of the lines less than, less than 21 inches or smaller diameter. It's also doing that, a cleaning inspection of those lines. And it's, it's designing, building, and repairing these local stormwater facilities that you see in the region. It also includes within it the street sweeping, you might be aware, maintaining the water quality facilities that are in our unincorporated areas and cleaning catch basins of water quality. So this, that local program that we provide to our customers.
Those are also the things that cities as implementers are responsible for doing in their own jurisdictions.
Yes, in their city limits, yes.
I have a question. I have a question, but the, the regional services and the local services, you talk about maintaining sewer lines 24 inches. And then here in the local, you talk about 21 inches and smaller. Is there a gap, do we see? Or is there no sewer lines that are between?
There's no, yeah. It covers the spectrum.
Okay.
So just some background on the study and how it was put together for the, the update to the allocations. We interviewed all departments and programs within the district to get an understanding of what services they provide. Within that, we kind of established with the services they provide, we established, are these sewer or are they stormwater? Are they regional? Are they local? And as we identified those services in those operating units, we then looked to determine a basis to allocate those costs. And it could be that some of the programs actually track their time to projects, like in regulatory affairs. We looked at lab testing that was happening at the lab. We looked at for conveyance or engineering services. We looked at, you know, their, their historical CIP planning and what projects they, they worked on within that. For the NS, so the natural system side, we looked at extreme miles and their, the temperature management plan that they managed there. So we look for these ways to allocate those costs to those operating programs. And with the exhibit that's provided in your packet, that really gives you a really good detail on each department, what they do, what we analyze, and how we did these allocation bases. So what I'm showing you right here is, this is the outcome of the 2008 study that for operating and maintenance cost allocation. We do not have any breakdown related to the capital and the debt related to that. We have the operating maintenance. So this shows you, when that study was done, that was how they identified the different, the sewer versus the surface water programs. And then with. One thing I wanted to note about that is, a reminder, this is the basis of our existing rates. This is how we bill right now, how we've structured our rates. And as they're increasing to that, how they're done. It also is the basis of how we allocate costs to our sanitary system, sanitary to stormwater. So a reminder that all labor happens inside of the sanitary sewer fund, and it gets allocated by a transfer to the swim program to pay their share. So this is the basis of that allocation. And you'll see the importance of that as we. So that was the 2008. Now, what we're starting to show you is, we talked about this update today is the 2024 actuals. So it's allocation based on actuals. So we're going to start out first with the operating and maintenance cost allocation for the program. So you see here how we, in this slide, we've shown you how we split it between the sewer and the surface water management. But then below it, we also talk about that regional, local component for each of the programs within there. And all of these allocations were really, like I said, based on that, looking at the tasks that they perform, what utility they touch, and whether they're regional, local, and allocating accordingly. For the operating programs, directly to the service provider, for the admin that support the operating, or for the business services in general, those were allocated based on their cumulative direct project costs. You do see that for most of the business services functions, they're equal in the 2080 split of regional, local, but for finance and accounting, it's slightly different. And that really is because we do billing for our local customers. So it was identifying that local component of our service. So that was operated maintenance 24. So that was operating maintenance 24. Now, we're going to talk about another component of cost, which is our capital improvement program. And so this is the delivery that happened in 24 and capital improvements. You see there, 90% of the CIP or 80 million was sanitary sewer and 2% was surface water management. And within there, we looked at each project in that year and identified whether it was regional or local in nature. And that's where you get your split down below regional for standing, regional 93%, local 7% on Sannie. And for surface water, regional 81% and local 19%. And when you're looking at, on the Sannie side, a lot of the projects that drive cost in there are treatment plant related. So that's why you really see a large percentage of that area in the regional bucket.
Kathy, is is there? Am I missing something here? Is there a comparison for 23, 24 to back to 28 on the capital improvement program cost?
No, because we did not have detail related to
Okay.
capital and debt back in 20, to the 2008 study. All we have is the operating.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And just for informational purposes, on the surface water side, that that split that you see between regional and local, really that that local component is their share of some of the store conveyance projects where it's a large majority of what has been happening in that in that year for surface water related to the the corridor and streams. And one thing to keep in mind too, is this is a picture in time on capital program. So when we go and we build out our forecast, we're going to look at the five, 10 year CIP and how and how projects fall within that to better define as we move forward, what that Sannie Swim regional local looks like. So debt service, debt service in 24, just informationally. So we have three revenue bonds that are outstanding currently. Those three bonds can only be funded through sanitary sewer projects. That's why all of the costs fall within sanitary sewer. And a majority of, and the basis of regional versus local was when those bonds were issued, what did we fund in projects? So there were some some local that were done, but mainly because of the size of projects, the regional. For the pension bond, the pension bond was a bond we issued to help reduce our liability related to the public employee retirement system. It's labor based. And so the split of that bond between sewer and swim is based on the labor allocations that happen through the state. So this slide is giving you an overall summary of the 24 cost allocation between the different components, the operating and maintenance, the CIP and the debt service. And it's showing you in there that that split overall of the program is 89% Sannie and 11% surface water. And then providing within it, these splits are regional, local, not for Sannie, 90 regional, 10 local. And for swim, 45% regional and 55% local. Wanted to show, because this is where we start to talk about the results of this report and where rates go. This tells you the story of some, an idea of where rates will go when we when we propose updated rates. So this is the 2024 actual costs. And we start out first with that allocation you've seen of the total cost between Sannie and sewer and regional, local for the cost allocation. But we also then went in there and we pulled our revenue information for that period for the two systems and for regional, local. And it's showing you in there, for instance, on the on the sanitary sewer side, that on the regional end, our our revenue collected is 4% higher than the cost on the regional. But on the local, it's 4% less than the cost. So it's showing you, there's going to be this rate shift between regional and local related to to cover costs.
And that's the difference between the 94 and the 90 and the 53 and the 45 is what you're
Yeah, so the 90, exactly, exactly. So on the surface water side, you know, we're showing that that cost allocation gave us 45% regional and 55% local. But when we looked at our rate generation, it was it was showing at 53% regional, 47% local. So it's showing that this regional rate is going to need to go down, down 8% versus the local would go up eight. So it's kind of hinting to you that there's going to be this shift in cost and rate. We tried to put a summary just together, just so you could see the big picture of what we moved out today. We had the 2008 study that was done. We had the budget based 23 update based on this allocation methodology that was presented. And then today's 23, 24 study. And the one thing that I wanted to to note is that you'll see some of the shifts, when you look at actual versus budget in doing your allocations, some of these monies moved with, so for instance, when you look down in operating. So for the swim regional, it was 47% when you did budget. But when it's, and the local was 53. But when we looked at actuals, it made the regional 42.
No, you, sorry, you got to point us.
Oh.
Where are you?
Oh, sorry.
Because you articulated so expertly and quickly, but we we need help.
Yeah, so O and M at the very top there, O and M. So in particular, I want you to focus on the swim, the swim program. And in the swim program in 23, when we did this allocation study based on budget, it was 47% regional, 53% local. But when we went and we used actuals, it changed that split. And it was 42% regional and 58% local. And it really is in relation to the the budget and where performance of activities happened. We had a lot of activity happening in utility operations, which is very local. And the NSCS, the natural systems program, which is very regional, there was less done in relation to budget. So it really shifts in there, those costs. So that's something we definitely have to take into account when we go and we do our update to the forecast rate development.
Which reinforces The 2008 model was put together based upon best available information at that time.
Yep.
And because of the efforts of all of you, we have a new set of best available information. And it's time for an adjustment.
And I believe in those years, the programs have changed a lot. Not only in the utilities that within themselves, but regional.
Hey, the permits changed in that timeframe too.
Yes, there's been a lot of change. I mean, this was something that, you know, we should have looked at more regularly.
Somewhere between 2008.
Exactly, exactly.
So I like, to your point about the the actuals and the budget. I mean, the the other thing I guess I want to be sensitive to is, I don't know how you're planning to use the fact that you found that it wasn't exactly what you thought it would be. I mean, that's always going to be the case, right? Like the studies are, there are study, the idea is to try to be close to correct, but we're not going for, you know, three decimal precision here, I don't think. How often are you planning? Like, what are you going to do with the fact that you did a cost study a couple of years ago? And now you found the actual to be a little bit off? Like, are you going to use that to
So that's where I want to be clear. This board talked about the need for this back in 2021, that we needed to keep revisiting this model. And that was 2021. Catching up with it now with the real data in 2025. And they're bringing that forward to us to take the next steps to effectuate it. But we've demonstrated the cycle need to not just wait for some nirvana, but have a business cycle where the actuals compared to the rate model are tested and updated regularly.
And what is the regularly cycle, I guess, is the education I need.
Well, I'll give you a little expansion on that answer. So I will talk about our existing forecast that we do now that's in place. It looks at our budget, but it also knows we don't spend 100% of budget. So when we push out outer years, we adjust that factor. So we would continue to do that. And we would utilize this information from this study of what budget was, what actual is, that variance. And we would use that to push out our estimates, our forecast out. So we already account for that when we do our forecasting, that we aren't going to be in the budget. This was just an anomaly in that the allocation study was done using budgetary versus actual. And so you can kind of see there is this variance difference. But going forward, we are definitely, we're going to be updating. We update these every year. Every year we update our forecast. But we would definitely want to go back and look at our overarching programs and was it center sewer, was it swim, is it regional? We want to question that all the time as programs evolve over time. And and so your updates more frequently every three to five years as where we would present on. But we update them annually.
Thank you.
And we're going to be holding our CEO slash general manager accountable for revisiting it every three to five years. And the CFO is following through and making sure they're using the data annually.
So this is, there's a story to tell here, a little bit about cost shift for maybe between the two different utilities. So this is the allocation of the total costs for 23, 24 between sewer and surface water and regional, local. And really, what I wanted to emphasize here was when you look down at the very bottom in the blue over to the far right, and it talks about surface water and it talks about their total costs at $21 million. That was in 24, based on the study. We did our transfers inside the budget based on the old methodology in 24. And that was a transfer of 15 million to swim. So that tells you that there is this movement of cost that wouldn't happen. And this transferred adjustment would have to happen of around $6 million. Movement from one utility to the other. So that's, that's one piece.
I don't know where to go with that on this table. I mean, I don't know where to go with the key message.
That, that, okay, 24, 24 total costs, split between sewer and surface water. 180 million down below there, sewer.
Yep.
21 million swim.
Yep.
When we did our allocation in that year to swim to cover their costs, we did 15 million.
So you're short.
We're shorting, we're shorting the program by 6 million.
Yeah.
But it's because we didn't have a rate to support that. If we would have done those types of allocations starting back then, we would have no fine balance in swim.
But you're not showing that difference on this slide, is my point.
Yeah, okay, fair, fair, fair. I thought about it later when I looked at it and I actually went and pulled a report and I go, oh man, that's a story.
Yeah.
So the key takeaway is service levels have changed since 2008 between utilities and between regional and local. So the the program cost reflected need to change allocations for the center sewer and the surface water management program going forward in our in our budget development and our forecasting. One thing that we see here too is that more surface water management services have shifted from regional and local, in particular, as we talked about, when you looked at the budget versus actual programs. And that rates will need to be changed to appropriately fund the the different utilities and the regional and local programs.
I need to stop on this slide myself, but go ahead. Do we have, do we? I understand that this is a financial look at these pieces. But what are the driving forces behind those changes?
I mean, the shifts in the programs?
What?
And the shift in the the tap, the programs themselves between the utilities and regional, local.
Right, so it's not an external. I'm asking, is it, you know, does growth affect that? Are there other factors?
I think it was regulatory permit. And I believe it is a lot of the changes in our natural systems programs.
Okay.
Think about now versus 2008, how many water quality facilities we have.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah.
The whole program portfolio has advanced.
Yeah.
So the need for adjustment is absolutely clear. Explained very well in the paper and through the course of your presentation and highlights today. This slide, I I have some real discomfort about messaging at this juncture. You've got the detailed messaging down, Pat. You're a real expert in this. But this is where I think the agency needs to do a better job. And frankly, I'm fatigued by this. And I feel like it's more because we're in the know, these are the crisp messages. But we have got to ensure that these presentations, materials as made available to the public are higher quality and dealing at presented with an external lens that cannot come later that has, should have been in this presentation. For example, key takeaways on the need for an adjustment. Yep. I understood that from everything you've said and having read both the position paper and the slides in advance. So I agree 100% that the service levels have changed, as demonstrated, job well done, that there is a need to change the allocations for sewer and surface water. That more surface water management services have shifted from regional to local and that rates need to change appropriately. From a messaging standpoint, external messaging, the model from 2008, which was based on the best available information needs to be updated.
Yeah.
The proposal is informed by the actuals of 22, 23, 24. And the adjustment is needed now to be worked through the budget process. Now, the reason these three key messages are important to me is we have to ensure that our city partners have the opportunity of knowing this context long before we effectuate it in the budget. And that's where I think we need to up our game in terms of key message takeaways.
This was a topic of significant, like in my city time, this was a topic of significant discussion regularly in both council and budget committee meetings. Like all the time.
Yeah, yep. We've needed to do this for a long time. I agree.
Well, that point is being belabored, right? Come on, we had COVID in there. We had a new permit in there. So I'm not belaboring the time, right? But you've instituted annually, as you spoke about, keeping up with this. But also with a clear and distinct test every three to five years to make sure the model holds. And if not, then in the future, doing another appropriate adjustment. So I think that needs to be articulated much more clearly. You're doing great work, you know? Absolutely, there's no doubt in my mind that all of this is excellent work and the time is now. Okay, but we've got to up our game with our external lens and our external messaging. So this is a public meeting. This is an external forum. Let's start talking that way. So off my soapbox now. Any other questions to this point from directors before we keep moving on with the remaining slides? Okay, onward home, Kathy.
So we wanted to provide a slide that showed you the current rates by utility and also within regional, local, just so you could see, have an awareness too. Because we're talking about some big swings in numbers between utilities and in particular into the local program. So we wanted to show that the local, although the percentage might be big in a rate change, the local charges currently that applying that percentage to those local amounts will be a smaller amount. So the impact, so when you looked at, say, a whole rolled up rate for in into the future. future, the overall increase might be 4% or 5%, but the split between the utilities, you might see it greater, the actual percentage increase, but it's because the local program does have such a small unit price to it.
So the, am I correct in articulating it as the local charges will see a smaller shift?
There'll be a larger percentage, but a smaller dollar. Speaking to Jerry.
Smaller dollar.
Smaller number.
Yes. Yes. That's a percent of a dollar. Yes. Just so there's some. And then next steps. So here we are today, we're, we're giving an update to the cost of service study with 24 actuals during the months of, you know, so going forward between the months of November and January, we're going to be taking this information, we're going to be updating our forecast out and taking into account this methodology, actuals for 25 budget going out, new programs that have been added over time and, and, and the capital improvement program as submitted with the splits and the end result being developing updated rates that we would present.
So I have a problem with this slide as well. We're getting much better about this on the Washington County side, particularly, for example, with libraries. We just went through a whole long process where we had to say explicitly through multiple phases that with that cooperative, it was the responsibility for city staff to take it to their city councils. So when you talk here about February to March, present updated cost allocation and rates to partner cities, is this to city staff or is this to city councils for both?
Probably both, right? Yeah.
Needs to be both.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know what your original answer was.
You need to say so.
Needs to be both. Yeah.
So the partners, yes, that would be their staff and, and.
Yep. It serves us best to say it explicitly.
I heard that this past week Sherwood explicitly about rates.
You need to hear it from us.
Yes. Joe, what, what exactly did they say?
They want more interaction when we're discussing changes to our rates. They want to be involved. They want to be communicated to, they not just staff.
Careful on the word involved.
But that's the word they use.
Informed, certainly. I'm.
I understand the distinction.
This is where I think you gotta update these slides. You can't push this out, is it, in my view? It's really good, but it's not sufficient.
Well, and we definitely wanted to present the rate, the rate, look at rates to the board first before we went out to the cities, just for, so you have awareness and, and your thoughts on it. But then, yes, February to March, we'd be going out and working with the partner cities, their staff and council and talk about the cost allocation study and the rates that developed out of that. That then leads over through this year, the budget process starts. So budget committee meeting, our budget would be developed using these proposed rates going forward and budget committee would evaluate, approve or make recommended changes and then it would go to the board for a vote on the budget itself and then our, our updated rates and charges.
So I would venture, and this is a question for my colleagues, I bet this board would appreciate in April, getting a full report out of feedback from those cities engagement. Which ones did you only get feedback from staff? Which ones did you engage with the city councils and what was the feedback by each? We don't want to have to wait until there's a proposed budget, the budget committee to find that out.
Or, or phone calls that we weren't expecting.
And just so you, I'm a bit, bit skeptical on this. There's what they'll, they say now they want to do and what they actually do. We're going to be in the total throes of IGAs for libraries, the library cooperative. And multiple cities are dealing with their own budget cuts too. So not, I, the body may be, what is it? The heart is willing, but the body's not able. I think their hearts are perhaps there and we're just going to have to see where they're actually able. So their staff may have to gather feedback through individual city council briefings that may be as good as it gets.
Because at the same time, we're going to be doing that feasibility study related to billing.
Yeah. So that's where as an organization, you need to report to the full board, what, for Washington County, we call it the POR, what all the programs look like.
Within the goal of starting this new rate structure, July 1. That, they want to open their questions there. Obviously, we've gotten some feedback on that. There is more information that we'd like to provide.
Well, let me help you here, colleagues. I know for some of us, we've talked about cost of service study before. What are your thoughts? I mean, you've heard from me, I think this is really good information, thoughtfully put together. Are you on the journey and onward how we go or do you have any other feedback?
I made my comments and questions during the presentation.
Yeah. Me too.
I'm on this journey, Chair, and wrote down some of the changes that was being recommended. So yeah, come back and I'm in support to come back in April for the board to get feedback and know what you've heard. I thought the addition of the council members and the staff was a good addition and being careful about the language and using some of the learnings about the library. I do think that was a bit of a dicey process for the board, but informed is what I heard. Yeah, good feedback and look forward to the changes we're going to make, the external facing document. On the journey.
Jerry, any thoughts?
Yeah. I followed the process. I'm not sure I'm going to follow the analysis. So maybe I can talk to you afterwards about that, but I think what would be helpful to me is if you go back a couple of slides to the average household monthly bill and tell me, what does that look like under the new, no, no, back.
Well, I can tell you that we are in the process of updating the forecast and then going out and doing a great job. So we'll have better numbers once we map out. The CIP has changed significantly with the West and East base master plan. Capital program might change a bit. We've had programs added in 25, 26 that we have to incorporate in. So there will be some change. So.
So Kathy, here's the problem with this slide and my colleagues have the opportunity to hear this at our board meetings frequently. It's not good enough to have a slide with just data. You have to have the key message typed out on the slide. Your key message was that when applying the rates, the local charges see a smaller dollar shift.
So the overall rating increase.
And your point of listing out the average household monthly bill is just to illustrate today's average household bill with today's rate.
Yeah. So that they understand that and see visually that whole.
Yep. You gotta put it on words on the slide. I think, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I forgot to ask Jerry another question. We were given the issue paper in advance. Was there something about the analysis in the issue paper that you either had a problem with or you just are saying you want more time to digest it?
I need, I need some more time. This was, this is great information, but yeah, still processing this. So yeah, I like the information. I think something we certainly absolutely needed to do and will need to continue to monitor. But yeah, there's more stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Trish, Director Trish.
I like, I, I like the idea of in April, coming back with staff and, and elected perceptions. I think that that's really important. And I, I do believe that when we go through the billing conversations, that there's a lot on our plates in relationship to partners in the cities. So I, I think it's going to be important, important to parse out what's what as well. So that's, that's just a message to all of us so that we are, we're on top of that. And I know that I'm not as comfortable with the systems that we have at Clean Water Services in the county, the chair holds a chairs and mayor's meeting. A lot of those, these types of issues would be discussed there. Here we don't have that type of situation.
I bring the CWS information into those meetings.
Okay. Okay. So I, I guess I was not as aware that the CWS information went there. So thank you.
Okay, can we please go back to slide 17? The next step slide at the end.
Oh, slide 17?
The timeline.
Oh, 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 I thought it was slide 17, sorry.
I did, because that's the slide number for this thing. Okay, no, next one. There you go. Board members, so we've added the item in April that the board wants to report back in April on city feedback. Beyond that, now's the time for us to give a thumbs up on the next step. Okay? We're with you. All steam ahead. Thank you very much. So it's 11:51. So we're a little ahead of schedule. How about if we, if we take our, well, do you want us to take a half hour break and have the design and construction topic start at 12:30, which is a half an hour earlier? Do you want to stick with the current timeframe? Because it all depends, Mr. Shamley, on how you have your staff organized for this.
We're good to go. Is the lunch here?
It's not my choice. I'm asking for a recommendation.
Staff will be ready if we want to proceed with a half an hour lunch and reconvene at 12:30 instead of 1:00. Lunch, for those who placed an order, it will arrive at noon.
Okay. So we're good to go.
And we'll reconvene at 12:30.
Yeah.
Great. 12:30 it is. Thank you. So welcome back to, hopefully they can see us, but welcome back to the Clean Water Services Board of Directors meeting for today, Friday, November 7. We're picking up with the afternoon section of our meeting and the first topic is design and construction standards with stormwater revisions.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. I'm Damon Raishi. I'm the Planning and Development Services Division Manager for Clean Water Services and I'm coming to talk to you today about stormwater revision to our design standards that, that we need to do because it's a permit requirement. And I know that several of you got to go through an update to our standards a few years ago, 2019. This is a little bit different scale than we had before, so I'll just say that right upfront. The other thing I want to mention upfront is this is going to be the first of several interactions throughout this process that we're anticipating will take a little less than a year. So with that, what we're going to cover today is sort of a bit of background and drivers to just help you remind, remind everybody about what, what the standards are and how it relates to our permit. And we'll get into the scope and timeline for this proposed revision. And then we'll talk about our stakeholders and what we anticipate their interests might be. And then finally considerations for the board after we've delivered this information.
As part of the background, could you please share with us the, the, not necessarily learnings per se, but how have, how has the implementation of these standards been helpful over these years from your perspective in the position that you have working across the entire agency? I think that will help ground us a little bit as you're here asking us to be on the journey of further change and improvement.
Okay, I will do my best if I'm not touching on it.
Whatever you do as a subject matter expert, please know you are. It will all be helpful to us.
So as I know, you're all aware, we have a watershed based NPDS permit, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. And that covers five different discharges to the Tuolot and its tributaries. Four of those are for our water resource recovery facilities, but one of them is a dispersed discharge for our stormwater system or the municipal storm separate sewer system, MS4. The section of our permit that covers the MS4 really has a number of things that we have to do in order to implement and run that program. And all of that is geared towards water quality for the Tuolot River. The specific criteria, not criteria, but the specific area of the permit for the stormwater that we're talking about today and is affecting the standards is post-construction runoff control. So really what that is, is it's the requirements for when you build new impervious or modify existing impervious area that you have to provide treatment for what runs off of that. And in 2019, because of, of the permit, we needed to add hydro modification. I mentioned hydro modification because it came up a lot between 2017 and 2019. We are not needing to make any changes to our stormwater requirements related to hydro modification. I'll just mention too, what hydro modification is, gets thrown out there a lot, but it's really that volume component of stormwater and how that rate of runoff and volume impacts streams and causes erosion. But again, that's not really the focus for, for this. So our design and construction standards cover a broad range of things related to sanitary sewer, stormwater, vegetated corridors that are sometimes referred to as riparian buffers, erosion control requirements, pump stations. So it's a, it's a broad, broad spectrum of topics, all tying back to that new development and redevelopment requirements. And really that's intended to do a few different things. Related to the permit requirements, it's intended to protect the health of the Tuolot and River. Related to our infrastructure and managing that infrastructure, it's intended to create rules that can ensure that we're able to effectively take care of those assets and, and provide service to customers. Chair, does that get at what you were hoping for in terms of the background around?
Well, it certainly reminded me of hydro modification. Well, it certainly reminded me of hydro modification, the volume and the rate of runoff. I think what I was ultimately trying to get at is as, as the whole crew has been out and you know, working with property owners on these retention areas as you continue to watch the stream runoff and before, was it incision that word? The undercutting, is it getting any better? Or getting, continuing to be challenging and just more of that anecdotal stuff?
I believe it's getting better. However, it's been a very short period of time. Those rules only went into effect later in 2019. And so it's only development that's occurred since then that has had that. That's not very much development when you look at the whole of the impervious area that's out there. So it is continuing. It's been implemented primarily in greenfield areas. And even where it's been implemented in more infill situations, again, it's only such a small piece of the larger area that was already impervious. It's going to take time to get there.
Yep.
So we have, we haven't seen immediate results, but I do think that it ultimately helps.
Well, I don't envy Clean Water Services being a surface water agency as we continue to see the effects of climate change, those more frequent cloud bursts and the intensity of storms. But I know we've got a great team in place to help ensure that the health of the river and the health of the watershed, that we're being responsible with it, not only now, but for future generations.
So a little bit about the drivers and we talk about the hydromod. The other part besides the volume is the water treatment piece. And this is something that Clean Water Services has been doing for decades back into the 90s. And that's the more traditional swales that you've seen. It's also some of the new, what we call low impact development approaches or green infrastructure. That's street side planters, rain gardens, green roofs, all those sorts of things. So that's more what this revision is about is that water treatment piece as opposed to the hydro modification. So why are we doing this now? We got a new permit a few years ago and that permit and that post-construction runoff control section had specific things that we needed to implement if we hadn't already implemented them. And it really kind of boils down to two items. The first is prioritizing onsite retention or local regional retention of stormwater and pollutant removal. And that also wraps in needing to adjust the design storm. Climate change is a factor in adjusting that design storm as well. Because as we've seen changes in rainfall, both the, really the intensity of rainfall, but also duration, that can change that, that volume of the design storm. But what they're really, DEQ is looking at here is wanting to see how much of that water from that water treatment scale storm can be put back into the ground. That's what they mean by retention is infiltrating that.
Kind of at or near where it came off the impervious surface?
Ideally, ideally, right? Because as you create impervious surface, you're funneling that all to fewer locations and it does, it's not as dispersed. So yes, they would like to see it as dispersed as possible. That's not always the easiest thing to manage. So we try to strike a balance there. And we've, we've got a lot of that already with the green infrastructure that we do implement. So they're looking for that prioritization of the retention wherever possible. And you've probably all heard for many years, we've talked about the clay soils in urban Washington County and how hard it is to infiltrate water. And especially when you start to concentrate it because now you've got to get more water into a smaller area into the ground than being able to spread that out. The permit recognizes, not specifically Washington County, but that there could be challenges with being able to infiltrate that water. And so if you're unable to infiltrate, it allows for treatment of that water quality storm. That's essentially what we do right now. So then the other piece of it is looking at the design storm. They wanted a numerical standard. They give a couple of options around that, but the one that's most commonly used and is maybe easiest to, to just state is capture and treat 80% of the average annual runoff. The different methods sort of arrive at a similar place and we'll end up through this process evaluating that some. But just again, kind of keep in mind, it's, they're looking for amount of runoff that is based on what we see on average getting put into the ground if possible. If not, then we treat that.
Damon, I have a question. They, is it the state or federal requirement?
It is a federal permit. However, it's administered by the state. So that permit is written by staff at DEQ. And we go, I, I think you recently received an update on, on the fact that we'll have to go through a renewal process. We're kicking that off. And as we go through that process, we have opportunities to talk with the state and give them feedback. So we will also be giving them feedback about our stormwater requirements specific to these, to these new updates.
Damon, can I step back or ask a little bit more about the reasons for this? We've had the permit for a while. So I'm still trying to come back to under item number one. We've had the permit for a while and we've known that there's a deadline. So really is the precipitating factor that you've given these requirements and deadlines, you've really assessed? So how are our techniques working? And found that perhaps there's room for improvement and these are opportunities to make changes in order to meet those and quote unquote comply? Or is it just that we've known this is out there? And so now we're finally getting to this stage. And, and mind you, I made all that up out of my brain. So I presented it as A versus B, but it could be entirely different.
So I don't know that we have done a super in-depth analysis about how effective our current standard is. I wouldn't say that we believe our current standard is inadequate at all. I, I think that there's always room for improvement, of course. And some of the changes that will result from this are more shifts in how we apply the standard than a real big change. I think we're going to be continuing to provide treatment like we've done for three decades. That's going to be a big part of what A is. In terms of why are we doing this now with this, basically a year out from this deadline? It's because we kind of moved through different pieces of the permit. So we've had multiple deadlines through this permit. They recognize that it's a big lift to, on day one, implement all the changes they've made to the permit. So we've had deadlines this year, for example, November 1st this year with our stormwater annual report. We had to include an update around our hydro modification and retrofit strategy.
So it's time for this component?
It's time for this one. Yep. As we work through that process. And I think the other thing about what DEQ does and the changes that they make, what we're seeing is they want to have more alignment in their permits across the state. So the language that they put in the permit this time is very similar to what other jurisdictions have received in recent years, but we're a little behind in that permit cycle. So we're, we're really getting a little bit caught up with the language. I think a lot of what, again, a lot of what we've been doing is comparable. How we're presenting it's going to be a little bit different.
And I think that's important because if you have to explain this to the development community or to local city partners, that underlying why is really important. This is the practical why as opposed to that external force, so to speak. So I'm, I'm with you. Thank you very much. I benefited from that a lot.
So in addition to prioritizing onsite retention and, and needing to adjust the design storm, there's also this requirement for a prioritization of green infrastructure before hardscape controls and offset programs. An example of an offset program is B and L. So just real quick, what is green infrastructure versus gray infrastructure? The picture's in the slide. The, the picture on the top is one of our very traditionals vegetated swales, has lots of plants through it. Water moves through that and the interaction with the soil and the plants helps remove pollutants. It's basically a filter. The picture on the bottom is an example of gray infrastructure and it's a, a big concrete vault. And it has these canisters in it that have media that goes in them. That's basically a filter. It also removes pollutants. They both do the same thing. They accomplish it in a similar but slightly different way. And they both have pros and cons. Of course, that green infrastructure is up on the surface. You can see it. It's easy to tell if it's failing. It can be used as an aesthetic complement to the landscape. However, it does take up space and sometimes that can be in conflict with, with other priorities. The gray infrastructure is in the ground, easy to forget about, have to really remember to go check on it. Sometimes getting that filters out of it can be a real challenge. They're not, they're, they're heavy, especially once they've gotten water going through them and they're saturated and it, it requires confined space entry to get them out. On the plus side, you, you walk across them all the time in parking lots and you don't even know they're there. So they don't take up nearly as much space. So pros and cons to each. They're really geared towards the green infrastructure because of its ability to infiltrate back to that retention piece. Gray infrastructure, there really shouldn't be infiltration occurring with those unless something's broken.
So where is the water? Does that go back into the?
So it goes through the filter and out to the creek.
Okay, so that's conveyed out?
Yes. Yep. And it gets conveyed out with the, with the vegetated swale too. Whatever doesn't have an opportunity to infiltrate goes back into pipes at the bottom end of it and that makes its way to the creek or the river. So in all cases, it's getting back, going to the creek.
So what happens with the gray, the example here with the canisters? What happens if the filters get full and aren't functioning?
Then that goes into bypass. Basically, the water goes around it. There's a way to prevent it from backing up and overflowing. So you lose treatment in that case.
So that's where you're talking about it being an important feature of maintenance?
Yeah.
And these are run, these are private facilities oftentimes?
Frequently. Yeah, both green and gray can be private or public.
Thank you.
HOAs or cities?
In our jurisdiction, fortunately, and I say this fortunately because it is just a lot to keep on track, within a neighborhood or a commercial development where water is crossing property lines, Clean Water Services or one of our co-implementing cities that does the local program does that maintenance. And then the private facilities, which are usually only on a single property and managing water from that single property has to be managed by the property owner. But we do have programs, both Clean Water Services and the co-implementers, to go remind people, check in on those. It's actually a permit requirement that we have that program. So that's sort of the dichotomy between how those work. So what we're proposing for this revision is really to focus on those areas that require, that are required in the permit to make those changes and not get into a wholesale change to either the stormwater section or the broader set, uh, the broader design and construction standards. What that means is that we would be looking at the runoff and treatment requirements in chapter four and that we would make any necessary changes to associated definitions in chapter one. And also any potential updates of stormwater structure details in appendix B. So this slide has already got a lot on it and really doesn't have everything on it that we will need to be doing as we go through this next year. But I think we've captured the majority of the highlights. At the beginning of the presentation, I mentioned that the board will have lots of check-ins. And so hopefully the schedule reflects that. And those are the, the starred items. And that's sort of initially what we're thinking. But the design and construction standards, when we do revisions or updates, it's a very dynamic process. It can turn into a situation where there's a lot of input and we may have to add additional steps in order to address that. Right now, what we're anticipating is really two draft rounds before we get to a formal draft that comes to the board in public hearing. So these would be the drafts that we post online, let everybody know about them, get feedback from all the stakeholders, try to incorporate that feedback as best we can into an additional version. So go through a couple of processes of that before we're bringing something formally to the board. As we go through that though, we want to check in with the board regularly. And what we've identified here is checking in with the board before we're releasing each draft. So that there's an opportunity for you to hear what we're proposing, explain why we're proposing what we're proposing and get your feedback before we're sharing that more broadly.
Would we get to hear what the public feedback's been in between each?
Absolutely.
I mean, to me, that would be important.
Absolutely. And we could, again, depending on the timing of when there's work sessions and what that level of feedback is, we could either do that if it's appropriate as a memo that we share with you or come to you in a meeting and explain that. So again, I think it, it's a very dynamic process depending on what it looks like and what your interest is. We will absolutely do what, what makes the best sense.
So your question is very appropriate. Many of us have been through this before and staff does a very good job of looking at what the volume and staff does a very good job of looking at what the volume of comments are and getting back to us in an appropriate forum, making everyone's, making highest and best use of everyone's time. But I've never felt less than well informed.
We don't want to over-inform either. So if it's too much, you can tell us that too.
That's why I chose the word "well."
So something that's not on the slide that I do want to highlight, and then it comes up, you'll, you'll, you'll see it again later, but one of our key stakeholders in this are the co-implementing cities. And I think they're a little different than some of the other stakeholders because they're also implementing these standards just like we are. So what we really want to do through this process is have them help us co-author these revisions so that it works for their jurisdiction as well.
So before you move on to the other slides, I have a concern about not the process because I think the, your proposed process is a good one. Rather, my question is, how are we achieving transparency on the process? Put differently, how are we going about publishing this process?
Yeah. And I don't have any of that information in here today, but we have been working on it. We've been working with our communications group to develop a communication plan for this, just like with any project. What we did last time and what I am looking at trying to do this time is having a dedicated webpage for this information. And then we're going to use Constant Contact as a way, this email mailer program thing, that will allow people to sign up. I think initially, we're going to reach out to the development community and environmental community that we're aware of and say, hey, this is happening. If you're interested, you can come to this place to sign up. And we will publish throughout the process. We'll also have a, a place where people can provide comments throughout the process.
So I agree. I'm very comfortable with programs like this about you're having a comps plan. What I'm more concerned about is the point of that we give a thumbs up to this, but the public has no indication that we have blessed this process, that we have acknowledged, we, the board, acknowledged this is our process. And therefore, we, the board, have delivered on transparency of, of this program. So there are multiple ways to deal with that, whether it's a, just an acknowledgement of the process as a consent agenda item, but having this basic overview presentation accompanied, even the discussion paper as well. I mean, you've done the work, but we need to take an action to say, yes, go forward.
I think you're right on thinking and track with us. So I'm not sure if it's clear in here, but our, and I'm a little bit of the punchline, but I'll, I'll say it now and maybe we can discuss it more in a minute. But we are intending to bring this as an action item to the board. So it will have that public opportunity.
That's what you mean by authorize the revision process. It says to begin as opposed to this is the process. That's where I didn't catch that nuance.
And maybe we need to be clear. So I think we are looking to have the board formally authorize the process and the scope and also a piece that I haven't mentioned yet, which is CWAC's role in this. And what we've done in the past is have CWAC act both as a sounding board for the process, but also a public forum. And in addition to actually holding a public forum, there are a good cross-section of stakeholders. So they're, they're a good place to just sort of get general feedback. It's a public meeting. People can show up at it. So we usually through this process, update them as we go as well. So we would be ultimately looking for the board to approve staff with moving forward with this. We would include the scope, the process as part of that action item and then also CWAC to be engaged as a public forum.
On the, on the schedule, you actually say board charge to CWAC? Is that what that's referencing?
That is.
But it isn't. Let's be clear. It's, we still have a public hearing at the board.
Oh, yeah.
And so, but you're being very clear about public review comment period and utilizing CWAC for that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, the, so if everything goes according to plan, knock on some wood someplace, the board would take a formal action at the beginning and a formal action at the end.
And be informed along the way.
Yes.
Yep.
And that item just, I just pulled up the, your schedule December 2nd is what this is.
Oh, terrific. Let's just make sure that the phraseology of 1A is different, is improved. I think this is a great plan.
So just to touch on the stakeholders, mentioned the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission. I've talked about co-implementers. Of course, the development community is going to be an interested group with this because they are going to be affected with each of their developments. Also, in the past, the environmental community has shown a lot of interest in when there are changes to our standards, especially around stormwater. And we saw this in 2019. So I would anticipate that we will also have some interest from the environmental community. Something that might be a little bit different than previous times is community participation organizations. Haven't seen as much interest from those groups in the past, but I know over the last year, year and a half, I've been to a few CPO meetings and helped present at those and then just also hearing concerns from neighbors that there's a lot more interest around development and requirements for development. So I wouldn't be surprised if this is a stakeholder group that also becomes involved.
And I think there are other ad hoc community groups.
The development community has a couple representatives on CWAC, right?
They do. And so does the environmental community.
And we also, if asked as any prologue, we will get letters.
Oh.
From HBA.
From both sides, from both of those groups. I have no doubt.
Business community is another potential. And it's just as they're thinking about expansion, they frequently fall sort of in that development community group, but they're not regular developers, so.
Which you have it in the discussion paper. It would do us well for you to also add them on this slide.
We'll do that.
Otherwise, they might see, but we don't see ourselves. It's just you don't see yourself on that slide, but you are actually comprehensive within the process.
So we've also been thinking a little bit about what those different communities might have an interest in related to these revisions. And the development community, I think, will, they spoke up a lot about fee and lieu with our last update. And because the prioritization of green infrastructure before gray, before something like B and Lu, I think there could be some concern that fee and Lu goes away or it's reduced. And, you know, until we go through the process, I won't know that for certain. I don't necessarily read the standards that way. I think that we'll have to develop criteria about how that works.
It's also going to be important for you to start with. The agency DEQ has prioritized green over B and Lu.
That's right. Yes. Yes. This is a permit requirement. This is not something that Clean Water Services staff has decided is a good idea.
Yeah, this was, this was, you were quite eloquent about that of when we were talking about the, the drivers and that the agency DEQ has prioritized this and you wanted more alignment across the state.
Right. Okay.
Because oftentimes, yeah, oftentimes we talk about the uniqueness of our permit. We don't frequently say there's commonality across the state with what we do, so.
Well, and the other piece of that, that I think we will look to, to help figure this out, but others can try to get a sense of what it might be like ultimately is there are other jurisdictions around the state that have implemented standards to address these requirements. So there's examples that we can pull from.
Who are some?
Gresham, I know Corvallis, I think, did it very recently, Salem. And we'll, as we go through the process, we'll pull from those and show those.
Yeah, that'd be great.
The environmental community was also very interested in fee and lieu the last time we went through this process. I think their concern is that it not be used too broadly. That again, if you do fee and lieu, you potentially move the mitigation for the, the impacts away from where the impact is occurring. And what we heard a lot last time is let's try to keep that close to where the impact is happening. So that becomes a challenge with fee and lieu is that collect a pot of money, where can you use it? And you have to accumulate enough money to, to use it someplace. So that often means you're consolidating your mitigation into an area. So that's a concern I think we could hear. And then the, the cities and, and developers, and this may be a little more to the business side, business owners, may prefer gray infrastructure to green infrastructure. Right now, if you don't have water running off of your property and you've got a private facility, you're allowed to do gray infrastructure. So there may be some concern that that choice will be limited.
Now, Damon, help me out here because we've talked about this in prior years where there wasn't as much experience with caring for the green infrastructure as there was with managing gray infrastructure. It seemed like gray was, was far more common, a known quantity. This is how you charge for it. This is how your public works team implements it. And maybe not so much experience on the green side. Haven't, haven't we advanced our thinking? What's still getting in the way?
I, I think that the concern tends to be about space more than maintenance.
Got it.
Like physical ability to make it happen in the available space.
Right, right. Yeah. So if you've got competing requirements, we've got to get, either it's a requirement or because of your business, you need so many parking stalls and you've got to put a swale in that eats those up. That could be problematic. And your gray underground canister vault can coincide in space with those parking spots.
Yep.
That's an example. And there are some cities that like that approach as well. And they may speak up. Again, I don't know that this, it's a prioritization. It's not a prohibition. So I think what we've got to do is develop criteria for when is green infrastructure appropriate, when's gray infrastructure appropriate, when's fee and lieu? And you sort of bump through that prioritization list. I think we'll be looking to the cities initially to really help us develop that list because the cities and the county have that land use piece that we don't have.
This is, you've used the phrase criteria, development of criteria a few times in this topic. And this is the first time the light bulb finally went off for me about the value of criteria and what problem the criteria helps solve. Got it. Thank you.
I think our current standards does most of this already. Green infrastructure is the majority of the infrastructure we have out there. We prioritize it. It's just not clear in our standards how we prioritize it. So the considerations for the board, one, we have this proposed scope and really we've limited it to, to the, the things we need to do. We've got a year to do it. So we're very focused on this revision. But we're, we're interested if the board, and I think you've already provided a lot of good input about the engagement process and what we could do to make that better, but if there's other suggestions.
I mean, I think including what's been said, what's planned is very robust. I'd like to see it used as a model for maybe some other engagement opportunities, not necessarily even at Clean Water Services.
Well, I will say that it takes a lot of work. We've been through this and it's very, very time consuming and so.
You feel like you get a better result though?
I do think we get a better result.
That's what, to me, that's the most important.
So Jason and I have spoken our piece. Jerry, Pam and Nafisa. Are you all set with all these questions? Thumbs up for me.
Yeah, I like the process. It's, it was very good to have that explained to us, the difference between the green and the gray. So just as a comment, I drive down Jackson School Road from Evergreen to the freeway and there's that huge development that's going on there. It looks like they have a fairly significant swale built in there as well. Is that, I guess, have we been working with them to make sure that that's done correctly and everything?
Well, it's just funny because there was a time back when I was a plan reviewer, I knew all the projects everywhere and what was happening. And I just, you're going to get out of the specifics that I know real fast, but that is within the city.
But he knows somebody who can get you.
I absolutely know somebody. The, that's in the city of Hillsborough though, I believe. Yeah. So Hillsborough implements the local, their local program, including the standards. And we do work with them, but they are the lead on permitting that.
Well, yeah, I guess I didn't expect us to be managing all of those kind of projects. But at the same time, there's been a couple of, as you go down there, there's also it looks like cutouts, pretty significant cutouts along the sidewalks. So I'm just, and then you go back the other way on Jackson School Road into town and they've developed those looks like green catch basins in there and they have plants in there. So at least there's some creativity that goes on, on capturing this stormwater runoff without using the gray. And something that's much more probably environmentally pleasing. But yeah, I thought they did a great job on, on the street going into town. And it looks like they've got some similar things going on out in that new area, which would be good.
And Hillsborough takes a lot of pride in working with their development community to get good results.
Yeah, that's good. A good thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
I just have a simple question here. On the, on the gray filters, how, how frequently, I suspect it depends on where they are, but on average, how frequently do those filters have to be replaced, cleaned? And what type of crew time does that take?
Well, it'd be on me on some of this and Ryan Sandu would be able to probably answer that off the top of his head a lot better than I. But. But you're absolutely right about the, it depends on where they are. So depending on what's coming into it, they can plug up faster, like any filter, depending on what's going through it, that affects it. Part of the challenge with it is there's a routine. I won't say what I think it is because I'm not 100% sure, but it's, it's on the order of a year to a couple of years. And that they have to be checked. The problem with them that we see sometimes is that they plug up quicker than they get checked. So when that happens, they go into bypass, like we talked about.
They're no longer filtering.
And they're not filtering anymore. So that's the challenge. You know, some of them only have one or two canisters in them, a lot quicker to change those out. But again, it can be confined space entry. So you've got to like stop up the street. If it's in the street, parking lots, that's hard. Somebody's got to crawl down in there, get them out, waste them up on the crane. There are vaults that have 10, 15, 20. Those can take, I've heard, multiple days.
And is there ever a failure of the natural swales?
Yeah.
And how, what's the, what, how does that show up?
It, well, there can be lots of different kinds of failures. You can have vegetation die off. You can have them short circuit where sometimes you'll see how they're serpentine because they fit them into a spot. And if the water cuts across because it erodes, then it doesn't get the residency time it needs to get the pollutant removal.
Misses the filtering.
It misses the filtering, exactly. Then also they can start to plug up as well, that soil. And they do have a life cycle and have to eventually record out and new topsoil and replanted.
And litter is also a problem.
It's like decades.
10 years.
More, more like 20.
Oh, okay. Just to go, I mean, again, we're not looking for.
And it's a variable and.
Well, what I think it's going to be interesting, like I moved here in 1990 and there were several stormwater retention areas put in and we've seen the development pattern of our area. I mean, I've got it here just in terms of a handy dandy chart that I usually carry around with myself, with myself or with me about the decade growth. And from the 1990s to 2000, it was 134K. 2000 to 2010, 84K and 2010 to 2020, 70K. And that's just population, right? So then there's households. So my point is, we can see how the UGV has changed over time. But the point is, more of, more stormwater retention areas have been put in place, whether they're green or gray. And I'm not, I'm curious as to between CWS and the co-implementers, what the volume is. Such that I'm wondering, you know, the clock may have started for prevalence in the 1990s. Advance 20 years, right? Advance, and then take stock of the volume of them in that 20 years, advance the next 20 years to see how are we doing on the replacement, so to speak.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something we could, we could follow up with our field operations.
I don't know if we've been factoring in the cleanup and replacement cost?
They, well, I don't, I know that we do it. So I am not going to.
It's in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Does the green, the green infrastructure now ever call for or allow kind of the older school? What many would call mosquito ponds for a better term, lack of a better term, or are we, are we past that being a common? It just does not seem like a great element in our communities.
Right. You can end up with ponds that, that have standing water. We usually try to minimize how long you can have standing water and it's typically in the winter months that that's happening. But as part of that detention function.
The mosquito season.
Yes. I mean, if you got a big enough rain in the summer, it could. But they're not intended to stay full of water. They also have vegetation in them. So they're not just a pond most of the time. There may be some older ones out there that look that way, but it is also to some, there are rules around what is required, but they're more functional based than aesthetic based. So that, at least for us, some of the cities have aesthetic requirements. But for, for Clean Water Services and the base rules.
It's about the function.
It's about the function. And so then it's up to whatever the land use requirement is or to the developer's desire, what it looks like beyond that.
Thank you.
Onward to next steps.
Next steps. So as we talked earlier, we are looking to bring this to the board as an action item on December 2nd. And we will craft a board memo that touches on all the points we discussed.
Great. Any last questions or comments, board members?
This will be an action item or?
Yes.
Okay. Making sure I think it should be.
Do you want it on action or do you want it on concept?
I think it should be on action.
Action.
That was the plan.
Anything from anybody else? Okay, I will add, this was great, great material, great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okey dokey. Onward ho we go with the agenda. We've got, it's now 1:25. So we are still ahead of schedule. Does anyone need a five minute bio break or anything?
I would love that.
Okay, so let's reconvene back here at 1:30, five minutes. We're going, you're back on recording. And we've switched topics now. Everybody should have your green lights on your mic. So now we're moving to our next topic, residential customer awareness, satisfaction and values research. So Karen DeBaker, we're going to send the mic over to you.
Thank you very much. I will first, as you know, I'm the Communications and Community Engagement Manager. I am joined today by D H M Research. So we have Lane Cooper, Research Associate, and we have Michelle Neese, President. So welcome. I'm very excited they were able to join us today. One of the things, as if you remember, I was just here, it was actually less than a month ago, and we spoke about the Stakeholder Insight Survey and the background to all of our research, why we do it, data informed decisions. So to do a little bit of grounding, we presented this timeline in a little bit of a different format last time to show you the trajectory of community research that we do. And this is how we, what helps inform us that we're being successful or not. But in 2023, we had, we do this survey every two years. So we did it in 2023, July, August. Then last fall, the Stakeholder Insight Survey, which is Daniel Ridda Tor, who's in the back of the room, brought that to you. And then in May, June, we did the Rate Payers Values Focus Groups and the 2025 Residential Customer Awareness Survey. That's why they're both in blue because they work together. And then in 2026, as we mentioned last month, we'll do the biennial, biennial one for the Stakeholder Insight Survey. So the focus groups that we did, let me go back, the Stakeholder Insight Survey was fall of last year. So we knew where the world was, where Clean Water Services was, kind of before the enhanced attention. Then in the spring, we kind of were right in the middle of things. And then we just completed the survey that you're going to hear about today. So it's an interesting trajectory on the before, during, current or after. So. The other thing I was going to say too quickly is that we're excited because D H M also completed the customer, the rate payer research for TVWD this summer. So we have that research too. And then that experience and that information aligns with some of the utility, other utility work that they've done across the region. So. So I'll give you a little bit of background before I hand it off. Like I said, we've been doing these surveys since 1988. Helps inform our programs, processes on our projects. We in, starting in 2010, we started to do what's called an online panel. You may be familiar. I know you are here with Metro's Optin. And then it was similar to that. We called it West Side Voices, where people actually sign up to be surveyed. And then in 2020, we changed the methodology. We went back to telephone, email surveys. And what we did too is we changed the way that we research. I mean, 1988, we really hadn't changed our methodology much since then. So now we're getting much richer information. So you'll see the scales changed a little bit. And we'll note that when we get to those slides, how that impacted the survey work. So. Any questions so far before I hand it over? Okay, I will hand it over to Michelle.
Thank you, Karen. So for those of you who have been here for many years, as Karen said, you've seen the similar survey before. We are, ask people if they're familiar, do they know who Clean Water Services is? We ask them a few questions about the quality of water in the region. And more importantly, be dive into what's important for them in terms of what services are important to them that Clean Water Services provide? And how well do they think Clean Water Services is doing in providing those services? And again, because we have that long rich history, we could do some benchmarking to help us interpret numbers and what they might be. We did this in the early parts of September, so hybrid survey. So we call some people on the phone, sales and a few online still, and other people we text to ask to take the survey online. This is, at this point, common in the field, part of meeting people where they are, right? Although some people, but some people would prefer to take the survey online. That means they can take whenever they want, right? And then other people actually still do want us to talk to you on the phone. And so that's part of that. And then just trying to do our best to reach different audiences in the way that they prefer. Yeah, we did offer the, both the in-person interview and the online version in English and Spanish. 19 people took the survey in Spanish. And in addition, there was a option, Clean Water Services was able to promote that if you weren't called and you wanted to weigh in, you could go ahead and weigh in.
With the same questions?
Same questions. Yeah, the same questions, pretty much the same, that the one op, the one kind of difference between them is that in some of the demographic questions, they could skip it and still move on in the survey. Whereas on the phone or online, you could say, I don't want to answer it, but you had to sort of choose, I don't want to answer. So that's, that's the difference I got there. And then as Karen said, in May, we had some, May and June, we had some focus groups, three different ones in different areas geographically in town. Those were in person. And that was to allow us to have more in-depth conversations with people about their values and priorities. Okay, so this is a demographic breakdown of the survey respondents and specifically the ones that we contacted ourselves. We do ahead of time set quotas to match census for the region. And we talk to Clean Water Services about the geographic distribution of customers. And so we're trying to batch that. So in terms of age, gender and ethnicity, what you see reflects either a mix of quotas or weighting to ensure that the sample is representative of the population. In this survey, again, 6% answered, responded in Spanish and like 40% of people had children in, in their household. Few more demographics.
Can we go back to that one?
Yeah.
When I'm just looking at things that are interesting about the demographics to me that seem unusual a little bit is the low number of six, 55 and older folks that participate, usually they're actually overrepresented in local government surveys that I'm used to seeing the results of. So that's interesting to me. And the other is that 31% of, on the income one, 31% of the people surveyed made more than $150,000 a year. Also not usually what I see on local government surveys.
So on the age piece, that's part of us setting quotas. So what is true is that certain people are more likely to take surveys and specifically people who match me, older, well-educated women, are, are white women specifically are the ones most likely to take surveys. And so one of the things we do is we set a, we set a quota and we're like, okay, you've reached the max that we need to hear from that bucket. And now you need to work harder. And we're often having to work harder specifically to get younger people who do not yet have a college education. As one of the groups that we have to spend more time to get them, you know, get their responses in our survey. And that's, and that's by design. It, you know, takes more effort.
In the age one, though, if you did what you just described, I would think you would have at least as many in the 55 and older category. Since they're usually much more commonly responding to these surveys, I guess.
Can I ask the question all differently?
Sure.
If I understand what you're getting at, in the use of quota and weighting, is it true that in Washington County, 29% of our population is 34 or less? 36 is between 35 and 54 and 32% is 55 or older? This should match census for your county, guys.
Yes.
That's a good comment.
Now, now, this is 18 plus, right? So your actual census is zero above.
Right.
So, but if you took just the 18.
The adults.
Yes.
Do you think it would match that? It should.
It should. Yeah. I mean, we, we pulled the samples from ACS. And that's, that's part of our process. Now, I, we set quotas on education and not income in part because, to be honest, more people refuse to answer income. So that makes it harder. But generally, we do set the quotas around education because people are more willing to get some information.
I'm realizing what's throwing me off. I think a little bit about the age. You've got multiple, the first two bands have almost 20 years worth of people in them.
Yep.
And then the last two bands are 10 and then whatever.
Yeah, they were split up differently.
Okay.
Okay. This is just a little bit of a, well, we're, we're sorry, go back. So what we understand from census is, if I have the number right, our white only is like 62%. And people of color is, there's non-Hispanic whites and so forth. So for some reason, the number 17% is in my head. So.
For.
But if what I'm walking away with from that chart is strictly using for participants in the survey, those who are white alone is 58%. And any identification of people of color is 40% of the respondents.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I will say, we do not. I will say, we do not, part of what might be throwing you off a bit, uh, Chair, is that um, DHM asks race and ethnicity in one question versus the two in census.
Yeah.
And it's a multi-select.
Yeah.
Which is how census was supposed to be going.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
And there are good reasons for doing it the way that we do it. But it does make it just, it might not match exactly to some of the tables that you're used to seeing. So I just wanted to call that.
Yeah, yes. I'm not trying to align census versus those. Rather, I was trying to make sure that I, I understand it with regard to the respondents.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, so the, the little, the map shows just the breakdowns. Uh, we, you know, we worked with Clean Water Services to identify how they break down. This is just to help you see that geographically. If we talk about it later, this is what that means. Um, and of course, how many people were in each area. By county, Clean Water Services does have a few people outside of Washington County. And we, and we did call people in those other service areas as well. We got a few people.
So in north, north includes that portion of the city of Portland in Washington County. Does east include any portion of city of Portland in Washington County? I don't think so.
We, this, we didn't get anyone from Milamana County who would take the survey this year.
I'm sorry, say that again?
This year, I write in my, I'm, no one, no one, this year, no one in Milamana County took the survey.
Yes, that's a different point.
Okay.
There are portions of the city of Portland in Washington County.
Oh, got it.
Particularly, I know for a fact in north.
I live in Portland.
Even though it says Cedar Mill slash Bethany, it should include dash Portland for sure.
Uh, I mean. I vote for the mayor. I vote for, yeah. So you're lucky. I'm on a corporate Washington County with a Portland address. I don't get a vote for any.
Oh, but that's the post office. Bethany neighborhood where I live.
You're lucky, not me.
That's a whole different thing.
Right. Um, it would, we really use the map, Chair, so.
That's fine.
Yeah.
It's the label I was picking up on.
Okay, all right, so um, okay, so maybe.
And we looked at, we looked at zip codes too. So we took all those zip codes.
Not a worry.
But just, but you're just like, for labeling.
Yeah, that's all.
So it, so takeaways.
And these were all actual customers.
So that's an interesting point because I'm not a customer.
That's actually why I asked it, because I knew you were.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I'm a customer of Portland Water District.
Right, so. As you guys. But your surface water rolls downhill.
So we use.
True, but I don't get, it's not charged, my bill does not reflect Clean Water Services.
Oh, that's true. Saw that whole classical Fannell Creek problem. So we are drawing from a database of residents that marks which sewer district they are in. We are relying that that is accurate.
Okay, so it's self-reported that they are a Clean Water Services customer.
It's not self-reported. It is a database that has marked them as in the Clean Water Services, I wouldn't be a sewer district.
Who controls the database?
L2.
So like a vendor?
Yes.
Okay, so plus or minus unknown a little bit of stuff, but not, not statistically relevant.
Good enough for.
Is what it's leaving me to understand.
Okay, perfect. Um, relevant to that question, the donut on the right is billing type. What we did was, we sent back to Clean Water Services the list of addresses of people we talked to. And they were able to identify which addresses were billed directly through the billing system and which addresses were not. Now, there are lots of reasons they might not be in that billing system, right? If you're in a multi-housing or land or other reasons, it's built by a city so that they're not in Clean Water Services billing, then they get marked as other, right? So, but we did have that additional layer of checking who was billed directly through the system. That's two addresses directly.
So, so direct build isn't necessarily city? It's a, I get my own individual bill?
It's not for cities.
Yeah.
It's, it's the, it's our open smart flex system, which is the system we have at TBWD.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
Yeah.
So it's all about, do I get a bill for my water meter?
It's, do I get a bill from Clean Water Services? Not the city. So for example.
Okay, but your point earlier was other includes multifamily housing.
This other can, right? Because.
That's, that's what I was picking up on.
To be in the direct build category, you have to get a bill from Clean Water Services that goes to your address, presumably your name or your family.
So other includes.
Everything else.
Direct build or uh, build through a city.
Yeah.
Whereas uh, the other may be, I'm in a UUA, but my utility bill is paid by the landlord. I never see it. Yeah, that's.
Right, and one thing I do want to point out, when we look at that other, which is what I've spoken with Blaine and Michelle about, is can I assume that all seventy-one percent then are all billed to the city? And the answer when we verify is no.
Right, yeah.
That's probably a lot of them.
That are billed directly by the city. But not all of them, right? The majority of them are saved, but we can't say all of them.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and so, perfect. So that's the billing type. Clean Water Services staff was able to make that designation, right? With their system, so without sharing information with us. Um, and then you can see on the bottom left, eighty-three percent of the people who answered said someone in their household did pay the bill. And thirteen percent said a landlord or property owner did. So again, those two data points together would suggest that, as Jason said, is true, is that most of the other are probably billed by the city, right? You take those two data points together.
Yeah, but if my husband took this, or if I took this, he's, he pays, he takes care of making sure the bills get paid. But I'm concerned that he may have said, well, I'm the property owner. Maybe that's just him.
Um, I.
Questions probably are.
I think the way we worded it, it actually.
Was clear.
I think, I, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but Blaine, Blaine can bring that up while I'm going.
It's not that important.
When we asked who pays the bill, we asked who pays your water bill? We didn't specify if it comes from the city or if it comes from Clean Water Services. We just asked in a very general sense, who pays your water bill?
And so you were able, you bucketized them.
Right.
Got it, perfect.
So they're two separate, but kind of related questions.
Yeah, yeah, awesome, thank you.
No problem.
And then we also asked them uh, this year, um, how often they have difficulty paying household bills? Again, not water bills, household bills. Uh, and so you can see sixty-one percent say never. Uh, and then um, still sixteen percent some months. And then you combine the last two categories, five and eight, you know, thirteen percent are saying most or every month they're having difficulties. So again, just another way of, of getting that financial distress.
Do you have a sense of how that might have changed or the difficulty percentage over time?
So we modified the format on this specific question, so I can't compare it to previous years for you. But I do know from our other work is that concerns about cost of living, concerns about expenses um, have been on the rise definitely for the past three years in the metro area.
Sure, okay.
And so my, you know, putting those together, I would, I suspect that you probably have more than you would have seen two or five years ago.
And the percent of rent burdened households across the region has increased. UGB cycle, or UGB cycle at least.
So, and, and so, and we do see that uh, in real terms in our surveys.
Michelle, is there a connection between the income category? The number of people that especially said the twenty-one percent less than fifty K? To that question of difficult paying bills?
Blaine can, Blaine's got the concept right in front of her, so.
Yes, I will look it up specifically, but from what I remember, those who were on the lower income spectrum were more likely to say that they had difficulty paying households, which is to be expected. Um, but I can look up those specific numbers.
So if we want to stay on track, we've spent, not, we're at one fifty-six or at about a half hour mark, and we still have a bunch of slides to go. So we better be, control our questions a little bit. So.
Okay.
So, so we'll try to.
We only have fifteen more minutes.
Slides and maybe save some more questions.
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yeah.
You got it, you got it. Um, okay, so we're going to get into the results a little bit here. Um, we're going to start off with some attitudes around the Tulsa River, the streams, how people view that, as well as uh, some general cold testing around awareness of Clean Water Services. So our first slide here, uh, we can see from overtime, people continue to rate uh, the river quality positively. Um, thirteen percent say the river quality is excellent, forty-three percent good. Um, and you can see there on the right, this is kind of remains pretty consistent over time. Um, which is good to see. Uh, we do have uh, you know, a little bit of fairness increase there, not too much. Um, when people think, when with what we've heard from the focus groups, um, anytime there was concerns about river quality, they were thinking about things that might be in the river, uh, chemicals or things like that. And they really connected it to drinking water, which is not really what you guys do here.
That's what I would have been concerned about.
Yeah, so any concerns around in fairness, uh, you know, or poor ratings, they're really more connecting that with the drinking water. Um, again, going back to the focus groups, we had asked, uh, you know, why is the river and the streams important to you? Um, and these were some of the overall categories that came up. Uh, water quality, recreation and family life, natural beauty. The recreation and family life, that natural beauty, these were kind of the ones that were mentioned most often. Uh, and we could see that also in the survey, um, around seventy, seventy-eight percent, eighty percent said that they use the river for hiking and walking along the banks. So there's a lot of recreation that's going on in the river. Um, that's why they feel connected to the river.
If I could, um, from the previous slide. Yeah, and the point made about often folks tie water quality to drinking water. Now, keep in mind, or I have to remind myself, I tend to see the silver lining even in all the dark clouds. So I may be somewhat optimistic here, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. You know, I've been saying for five years, based upon what you, CWS experts have taught me, all water is recycled water.
So it'll be used again.
Yeah, so not a problem for me.
That's a great point, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I did want to speak briefly about flood prevention because I know this was a topic of some concern. Uh, when we put it here in the slide, uh, this was a coded category that, um, because we had asked people what they consider important about the river and streams. And a couple of them did mention that it was a natural flood prevention system. So not necessarily that they're thinking about flood prevention systems as a whole, or how, you know, who does that? But when they think about the river, they were talking about it in the sense of the river just naturally absorbs runoff water. Um, and that's what was mostly coded into that flood prevention category. Any questions on that?
I'm not sure I under, I internalized the key takeaway you want me to. I don't, maybe everybody else got it. I don't need to slow us down.
Okay, uh.
One of the things, we were speaking about this too, and looking at what's important folks about rivers and streams. This wasn't an assumption that we would, CWS would manage all of this. It was more of a general question.
Oh.
What they felt the importance of the value that the river and the streams meant for them. So we had a discussion internally of, you know, well, we got, you know, where does our role fit? But this is what's top of mind.
Got it, okay.
It's kind of setting a baseline, so.
I've got it.
Our next question, we had asked folks, um, what happens to the water that enters your neighborhood, that enters storm drains? Um, and we can see about one in three, uh, know that it goes to the nearest river stream or wetland. Um, now we can see too, a decline here, uh, in that kind of tan representation in 2020. Uh, that was when the methodology changed. So previously, we had mostly opt-in responses from the West Side Voices panel. And often responses tend to be more engaged or aware generally of what's going on in their community. So it's not surprising that we see that big dip between 2016 and 2020 because of that methodology change. The continued decrease though, um, what we see instead is actually that increase of unsure. Uh, so more people um, seem to be unaware of what is going on, oops, I'm so sorry. What is going on with um, surface water? Or they're more willing to acknowledge that they are unsure instead of taking a guess. It could be either of those. But we do see that increase in unsure, which is kind of explaining that decrease of.
It's not a good sign though, that over the past ten years, we've gone from fifty-two percent to thirty-one percent that actually know where it goes.
Yes, and I think the forty percent in 2020 is going to be a more accurate measure because of that methodology change. So the people who in that fifty-three, fifty-two percent in previous years, they're more likely to be folks who are already knowledgeable of what's going on because they opted in to take the survey.
We know that the opt-in panel run by Metro and West Side Voices had more higher income people, people with higher education levels, people who, again, as Blaine has been saying, they, they're like, I really, I really want to talk to people in this community about my, about my beliefs, about what's important for this community. And there are people who probably were more likely to be homeowners who got the bill and who use Clean Water Services. And so, um, so Blaine is correct, that forty percent number is probably the number that you should really hold to were versus trying to think back to the fifty-two percent as being the true value that was there.
And the other thing I wonder about Jerry is from 2020 onwards, so in our current decade, how many community, uh, how many communications pathways have been pumping out? Drains to stream, drains to stream, drains to stream. I'd never heard that before. Yeah, but I'd never heard that since I, until I moved to Oregon in nineteen ninety. And the current neighborhood I live in doesn't have fish drawn at those grates. Whereas, you know, I, I, I'm on my third house. Um, the number two and three are in the city. I don't remember if number two had.
That was, for me, was seeing it on the ground before I really knew what was going on.
Don't put me to.
Yeah.
And we have a, we have an education program where we actually do have the decals um, for that. And we, we try to get them to the cities, so the cities can put them on their drains and stuff like that. And that's kind of the continued connection we have with them in coordinating stormwater outreach. So we do have those, we distribute them, we have the Boy Scouts put them on and stuff like that. But I will say, I would like to do more concentrated coordination with the cities and the outreach people there to install them. So that's a continued need, so to speak.
Well, and in my prior infill neighborhood, we didn't have storm drains in the neighborhood. There was just the neighborhood stormwater catch basin, because it was only a stubbed street with twenty-two homes. And so there was nothing to mark.
Okay. Um, so next we did a series of questions. Uh, it's kind of a whole read on how much people could identify Clean Water Services with certain um, services and water activities in the area. The first question we had asked was, who is the? The first question we had asked was, who is the organization responsible for stormwater and wastewater management? As we can see in that second line down, recognition for clean water services went up 10 points from 2023. What I will note, though, in all three of these slides, these were multi-select questions. So they could choose more than one organization. And so what we see, clean water services went up a lot, but we can also see that wrong answers also went up.
Yeah, Washington County should only come up when it is with development applications, right?
Right, and we'll see this throughout the next three slides as well, but so what this is kind of telling us is that.
The other thing mentioned, USA dropped off the news for the first time.
Yes, we took USA off. It had been on since 1988, and we officially.
It's probably time.
Yeah. Brand identification.
It's interesting that the percentage of increased unsure, that actually went down, but this, they still probably guessed wrong.
Right.
Yeah, that's the point.
I'm sure it's the state of Oregon. They take care of me.
That's right. So they're more likely to give an answer, but it doesn't mean that they're, I mean, they were a little bit more likely to be right.
Right. And I'm trying to remember, there's both the Metro Levy and the 2019 Metro Natural Areas Bond. I know they talked about water quality for fish and natural habitat, so. Metro is talking less about water except for when they're at the valley.
You still see the same amount year over year, thinking it's true.
Yeah.
And then you've been a little more specific, who's responsible for surface water management? This was a little bit tied with Walton Valley Water District. Again, both of you increased, you know, a lot since 2023, but increased in equal measure.
Me is that Washington County is listed.
Yes.
Again. Well, but especially for surface water.
Right, because again, it's telling us that maybe folks are guessing, or they're thinking it's one of these three or one of these four.
So we should feel good about the Washington County brand?
It's strong. I mean, in all, like.
Hey, shiny in that dark cloud.
I mean, we had a candidate forum for county commission la, like when I was running a year and a half ago, with one of the candidates talking about clean water services and how great the high-quality drinking water was. So that's a candidate. Like, this is, this is the world that we're in.
Yeah, homelessness wasn't a problem when I ran either by a candidate slash commissioner.
Okay, and then just to get through the last one here, and then when we asked about sewer wanted, sewer water management, you know, Clean Water Services has the clear lead there. Walton Valley Water District still went up a good 11 percentage points.
They may not like that they've got sewage association.
That is what they seem to associate them with.
Well, and the city selection probably was because that's where they got their bill.
Yeah.
Right, right, so.
Well, the cities are also, I mean, I will say this, the city, at least the city I was involved in, would brand itself as being, because they are providing the smaller part of the sewer system, like they view, and the stormwater, like they view themselves that way.
That's true.
Yeah, no problem.
And to your point, something interesting when we look at the demographics, those who have heard of you previously, who are aware of Clean Water Services as an entity, those who have been in the county longer, which we have seen in previous years, they're more likely to identify you for all of these particular activities. Interestingly, though, in the billing type, those who are billed direct are more likely to say Walton Valley Water District is responsible for all of these. So there's still some fuzziness there, especially around billing.
If they live in the city of Beaverton, so is this saying, I was thinking of two examples. If you live in the city of Beaverton, you're directly billed, but people would still say TBWD?
So the, and when folks write out their check, it's either we have TBWD slash CWS, so they can write their check out to, to both, but, or they just write it out to.
No, no, I live in the city of Beaverton, the bill goes to the city of Beaverton.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why I'm having trouble understanding this.
That's not direct billed.
Yeah.
Direct billed by the city. That's.
That's not what this is.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, directly billed by CWS.
Yes.
Got it.
See, it is confusing.
No.
I know it is.
That's because that's my second case. North Plains is directly billed by CWS. But they're still saying TBWD, or is it just that a larger population lives in the UUA, right? Versus our multiple direct billed small cities?
Yeah, and.
Well. But, but part of it is that here at DJM, we may not be experts, we aren't experts on how all CWs billing is happening. So got a little bit, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how to answer your question, because I'm afraid I probably don't have the right information.
Got it. I'll just, I have no problem taking the first line, just fine.
Okay. We have a cross tabs. Yeah, we have the, yeah, we have the cross tabs, but it, what it's true though is.
I don't need to know all the details. I trust you, Karen.
What is true is that people who get their bill from Clean Water Services, so they get a, it says Clean Water Services on it, that's direct billed. You can see that they, there isn't necessarily greater awareness of those people compared to people who are getting it from their city. That if they say something, they're more likely just to say 12 Valley Water, which does suggest that TBWD has higher familiarity than CWS.
Most people just call this bill their water bill. I mean, that is, that is the sort of general gestalt in the community about what.
And that's, that's where I'm thinking, somebody from North Plains, they don't know who TBWD is. But in the survey set of direct billed, I'm thinking there is a larger portion of TBWD customers in there than there are for the non-TVWD customers that are direct billed. And that's why it's more prevalent. Because it's reflective of the, that group. It's a statement of fact versus their perception.
Yeah, well, we can definitely, well, dig into that a little bit, but we actually don't know who this TV.
For the sake of time, let's keep moving on. Would you be able to disaggregate this for, based on the number? For the sake of time, there's like 12 more slides here, let's keep going, and they can follow up.
Okay, I'm going to pass it back to Michelle.
All right, I'll try to go quick. This is, everyone asked, have you heard of CWS, Clean Water Services? 67% said yes. This is similar to last year. Last year, or 22 years ago, 2 years ago, we spent some time talking about why it's dropped. And I said, then, let's wait till the next time to see where, to interpret it. And so what I would say is that, given where we are, that 2025 looks similar to 2023. I would sort of say that's your new post-COVID baseline, right? So that you should just start from this number, rather than worrying about the historical restrictions on this. We do know that people, the people who, more people who know Clean Water Services are those who, someone in the household pays the bill, right? So the house, that probably usually means their property owner. They, if they are direct billed, they're more likely to have heard of Clean Water Services, and if they've lived in the county longer.
So just so you know, we're giving you 15 more minutes. So I don't want you to just rush through, because this is the time for the board to hear and internalize what this is saying.
Okay. In the focus groups, we asked people there too, if they've heard of Clean Water Services, and we could get a little bit more of the context or more, say, you know, just more context from their responses. People who were not aware of Clean Water Services, we have some quotes from them on the left to characterize what those, what we typically heard. It's often because they're like, oh, I assume my city did it because they sent me the bill. So again, right directly to that question of billing, right? I'm a renter, I don't get a water bill. And again, you know, you know, group, some one person did, he's like, well, I just never get a bill from them. Kind of, and some people were like, I don't even know who is billing me. They're like, they're all the city, like they would have a conversation in the group about where might they be getting their bill from. Some of the people who said, yes, I've heard of Clean Water Services, what was interesting is, they, rather than focusing on, on, yeah, I get the bill from them every month, they often talked about seeing Clean Water Services out in the world. And so it probably is both, right? It's probably that you have the bill, and then therefore, when you see a sign or truck that has Clean Water Services, it stays in your mind, right? Like, I don't pay attention to all the worker bands along my street unless I recognize the brand and pay attention to it.
Light blue is a very effective color. I wish, I mean, I understand why we have navy blue bands, because that's the stock color. But the really big trucks are more like this color. And they're big and huge, and they're kind of a unique color. There aren't other utilities using that color. I don't confuse them with a PGE service truck, right?
Right, and so, you know, and so definitely the trucks, storm drains, people talk about signs along fencing around, you know, some of the natural areas. Again, seeing it out in the world is part of what maybe cements it into memory. We show here historical results on the level of favorability towards Clean Water Services. And favorability is there in the blue line, 42% favorable this year, and about equally split between those who have no opinion. Again, that's not much of a surprise, given the number of people who are, have heard of Clean Water Services. You would hope, you know, a good chunk of people who've never heard of them would also say, I don't know, but I think of that. You do see there in the red, historically, somewhere around 5% to 6% have unfavorable views. That's true of anything I ask, right? And I'm always going to get somewhere between 5% to 9% of people who say unfavorable. This year, we have that uptick at 18% unfavorable. Again, this was in September, and you, I mean, Clean Water Services had been in, had received a fair amount of attention. And I, it could be reasonable to tie that increase to that.
Yes, but nonetheless, favorable is still greater than double unfavorable. I know I'm reaching, don't get me wrong. Yes. Is this both from the focus group and the telephone interview you did, or just the?
This is from the surveys. The focus group was largely consistent. And in only one of the three groups, did someone bring up the topic of the news articles. And so most people, and most of the people in that group had not heard of it, and in none of the other groups did someone bring it up.
That's fascinating.
Really?
Yeah, don't tell the Aragonian.
Well, at the time, what I told Karen is, you know, when, when, when you're immersed in something, it can surprise you how little attention many other people are paying to a lot of things in our world.
That's not what my email said, the glory.
Well, and that you're hearing for sure, right? Like, that's the other part of doing a probability-based survey like this is, what you're hearing from is the loudest voices. And this is to, this is to help put, it doesn't mean they're not important, by the way.
I appreciate it. I do.
It just means it kind of, you know, having a little bit of context about how many people, but you do see an effect here. And towards the end of the survey, we asked them, do you have any questions or concerns regarding water resources management? Open question, they could say whatever they want. Most people say, nope. Yeah, nothing, and that has been true in the past as well, so they're, you know, close to 6 and 10. We hear other people mention cost, that they would like more information. I think two that were, well, difficult to understand, plan, and cause. These are very small numbers, I don't want to over-index on change over time on very small numbers. It was interesting to me that there was a little bit more like, I'm not sure, I want more information. And then again, you know, we had it coded in previous years, but 5% mentioned something about this spending. So again, but the overall context, 6, you know, 6 and 10, they had no questions or.
So the corruption spending Hawaii trips, that was in, that was in response to an open-ended question.
Yep, right there.
And they stated something about that without prompt.
That's right.
The question was, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, right, so the text is exactly what's there, so that, and they could say whatever they wanted, and then, and then, yes, we go through and code that.
And then how would you explain the 2020 and then the 2023? What would you say then, the 74 versus 59 now?
Um, I, I think that things are happening. One is, I think that when I do other types of utilities work right now, people are like, don't raise the bill, right? Like, people are really, so that's part of it. I know that that's not a big change, it doesn't count for all of it. I, I do think that people have more thoughts about the bills that they're paying. And even if it is, you know, I would like to understand plans and costs, that's not quite to the level of, or too high. Because people do feel fewer services are necessary, it's very important to them. And they would, and we did hear in the focus group a little bit, I just, I don't understand how I'm being charged, what I'm being charged for. So I think that's part of it. And those are the two things that, that is sort of some more of, and then. Yeah, that's where I would, that's where I would point to in terms of how I'm hearing overall. And, okay, the other part of this work was to really get at the values. We did the focus groups this year to help Clean Water Services revisit, check back in with the community about what current values are, because the last time was, you know, 2014, 2014, many years ago, a lot has changed in our world. And so there was wanting to check in and revalidate those, or be open to changing that, depending on what the community said. So in the focus groups, and we just asked them, what is the most important thing that you value in a storm and wastewater utility? These were the three buckets that they most often mentioned, something about clean and safe. They wanted transparency and accountability. You know, just to be able to have trust in, in the agency, and then reliable and competent. So they could count on you, and a good job was me. Many of those are all, many of those, all those ideas were somehow encapsulated in Clean Water Services existing values. So there was a little bit of refinement, but not a wholesale, wholesale change in the core values. And I expect that to make sense, right? Like, it's pretty clear that protecting public health, for example, is a core mission that the public relies on their sewer agency. Providing reliable service. And so all of those are just, you know, pretty as much important now as they were in past years. You see here again, keep rates reasonable, which is there in the third line. That one went up a bit. We've talked about it a few times today, that there's just more concern right now about the cost. And again, that those top three, so in before, the environment would sometimes be the, the third most common important or the third most important value, that, that the cost right now is overtaken now.
So you, I think you've done a good job of adjusting the explanation of your slide, slides, learning from our prior questions, you know, and adjusting, and I want to thank you for that. We do have, you do have eight more slides. We're just, we're at that fifteen-minute mark. You have eight more valuable slides before we even get to recommendations. So board, I think we should give you another fifteen minutes, but that we hold our questions so that we can get to the recommendations. And we're going to hold you accountable to get to the recommendations with time for us to discuss those within that fifteen minutes. Is that fair?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So in these values are, we also asked them how well is Clean Water Services doing at performing those services? And so these top, these four are areas where overall, they said Clean Water Service is doing well at providing reliable service, consistent quality services, protecting public health, protecting environment. In these three areas, there were more mixed reviews and a good chunk of people were unsure. So great, keeping rates reasonable, mixed, informing the public about how to reduce pollution, building trust through clear communication. And then finally, in the last four areas, this is where people just largely don't know. The majority of people don't know. They don't know whether CWA is an environmental leader, that access for all community, community members, plan for the future, doing enough for low income, just don't know. And here, again, people who've heard of Clean Water Services largely also say yes to most, more of those. Or, you know, they have, they largely are more positive about Clean Water Services on all of those dimensions. Whether or not they were built directly or not, did not have as much of an effect. This chart attempts to plot responses on two dimensions. How important is it to people? And how well is Clean Water Services doing? So the upper right hand there in the tealish color are things where the public says, like your customers say, you are doing well and these are really important to us. So protecting public health, protecting the environment, providing reliable service, keep doing well at those things. The upper left are things that are important to people and there's maybe room to address that. Keep rates reasonable is the only thing that's in there and that is always in there with any utility. So.
What it also tells me is we haven't been using that as one of our taglines. We've actually been doing it, right? Because we've had very low and consistent rates. But we don't trumpet that as every single day, our team works to keep rates reasonable. We instead talk about it, what they do to protect the health of the 12th river. It's about selling. From my, just one opinion.
I'm, I'm going to do my best just to get to the recommendations. So in the bottom left quadrant, you have things that are not as important to people and that they don't necessarily think that you're excelling that, right? So it's areas to improve, but also if you have to choose, you might honestly prioritize that. But again, informing the public plan for the future, environmental. This chart just does a little bit about what's changed since twenty twenty-three. I think in the interest of time, I'm not going to spend much time here. Other, you know, the chart tells you which three things have the biggest. Okay. Communications. Not a surprise probably to most of you that where people get their information continues to change. And right now, they are, people are more likely to get information from social media and online news sites and they maybe especially social media more than they were in the past, they're less likely to be using local newspapers, radio, so on.
Don't skip over the utility bills.
News updates included with utility bills.
Yeah, yeah, news updates included with those. Oh, I see, thank you guys.
Where's that going on?
That has gone on.
Oh, there I see it.
A lot.
Yeah.
Have you tried to make the bills more interesting?
We have, and we've been actually trying to do a lot more clarity with what the bill pays for and stuff like that. So. I think with them wanting to keep rates reasonable even more, I think they pay a lot of more attention to it. So.
Thank you. Okay. And then among the various social medias people could be using, the top three are precisely what we probably expect. Oh, maybe not YouTube.
I didn't expect YouTube, so.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's popped up with other clients too, so.
I've been watching ads on YouTube now. I never used to watch ads on YouTube.
So that anyways, the cross tabs also have lots of demographics about this, these questions in particular, that can help the communications team target to refine strategy. All right, recommendations. And you're doing great on time. As you connect with customers. The good thing is they already really value the work that Clean Water Services do. The fundamental service that Clean Water Service provides the community is crucial. They're providing reliable service, protecting public health. They already think that Clean Water Service does well at providing reliable service. Those are very strong foundations to start from. And so, you know, focus on the basic core things that are important to them. I also say, I think that they're primed to give you the benefit of the doubt. In a lot of areas, it wasn't that we were seeing high negatives. You see high don't knows. So I don't knows or soft, soft positivity is a great place where you can, you can build on your story, right? You're not trying to convince skeptic. You're, you're just trying to share information with people who are ready, who are willing and probably sort of leaning towards giving you the benefit of the doubt. And it also is helpful in this sense that you've done these focus groups, you've listened to customers, you're doing the surveys. If you can share that, any, any, share how you respond to their feedback, that usually helps as well. They'll trust. There was some, you know, less in the survey, they didn't necessarily know much about the future vision for Clean Water Services. Interesting enough, in the focus groups, they also didn't know what Clean Water Services was doing to plan for the future. But they often said they wanted to know that Clean Water Services was planning for the future. They wanted to know that that thoughtful consideration of a whole host of issues was happening. So I think there's room to, to share that as well.
Michelle, if I can add, Dr. Snyder, you mentioned that last time when we talked about our other research, but really honing in on why we have the reasons that we do, so when we talk about our CIP, looking out ahead. We try and try to do that more. So when I saw this, I was like, oh, we should do that even more. So it's in alignment with what you had mentioned, we need to do more of.
If your rates aren't changing, that's great to be able to say that. It's also a lot of costs are going up. And so I would say, I would try to in some way connect to finances, whether that's keeping low rates or effective financial stewardship, right? I think it, it would be good to help people understand that Clean Water Services is effectively and thoughtfully, you know, being responsible of the money that they get. And then again, there was a lot of don't knows about the level of support that is available for low-income customers. That's both an opportunity to share with the community, a real source of help for people who are having financial difficulties, as we saw in the beginning, people who are having multiple months of financial difficulties. And also share that information with the community so that they know that you were doing it. All right, that is the official end.
And we have more recommendations in the full report. We cut it down to five.
Well, also on page six. If that's what you would. Okay, commissioners, directors. Go ahead, Jason.
So I, I was thinking a bit more about just the whole, like what I get out of this to some extent is that there's some brand awareness, but there's a lot of people that just really kind of either don't know the name or have no idea what the name does. And I, some of that probably comes from what the name is. Lots of agencies that do similar work have it more intuitively in their names. I don't think we need to change our name, but I do think that presents a bigger challenge. I also am reflecting on the fact, and this is just feedback around, you know, what we saw about social media. And that's where most people now say they're getting their information. I have yet to ever see a Clean Water Services social media thing show up organically in my feed, ever. I've not really seen paid stuff show up before. I am very aware that there are sewer agencies that do pretty creative things that are even funny, you know, making comments about how they're here in Taco Bell's bringing back something. And that sewer agencies putting on their social media, we are ready for you. I mean, that's funny. It's creative. It's, you know, what that does, like, does that really provide useful information? No, but it raises brand awareness, gets people talking about it, people laugh. You know, then when you want to give a real message, people pay attention or they know who you are. And I, I guess I just think this is probably an area that needs to be thought about and planned for and acted on in a much bigger way than it has been.
I would love to do more. And I, we every year have a public awareness campaign where we actually do paid advertisements. We haven't done that the past two years. This last year, we haven't done it just because of the trying to be very extra frugal with the money and stuff like that. We were, I was a little worried what folks might think if we actually put money into buying media when we were in this situation, but.
There's lots of ways to grow that organically. You can push it with the cities. They all have a lot of following that does not require pay, like.
Okay, who's next? I can go this way. Thank you for your presentation. A lot of good information, a lot of stuff I learned from Clean Water Services customers. I think Karen, I hope you can use this data to sort of disaggregate, to find out so that you can target your education and your campaign to the people that really need to understand Clean Water Services so that some of the numbers could change, their knowledge could shift. So I, I know we didn't get into it, but, you know, is it the people that live in the unincorporated areas? Or is it the cities and, or cities directly built by Clean Water Services? Like, who are the population that said? As a board member, that's just my comment, but I think it would be really helpful to you. I, I don't think we need to get into it today for me, but I, I, that will be a crucial information to sort of know your audience and, and then, you know, it's interesting that you said focus on the basics. This morning, we have heard a, a survey assessment from the employees. Very well on point because the employees survey actually also said, focus on the basics. You know, let's get back to the basics of what Clean Water Services. So this is very timely, both internally and externally. So you hit the nail right on message and right on target here. So congratulations. Hopefully there are no talking between the two. Hopefully you didn't have Clean Water Services. The four hundred and two-year interview, hopefully. But I, I doubt that's how it works. I understand that was just a joke, but good job. And look forward to how you, what your campaign to get back to the basics looks like and how you you know, design the targeting of how we're going to educate, because I think that is a pressing point that you can address.
Well, from my standpoint, it, I don't really care if they know where their bill comes from. What my takeaway was on this was way back on slide twenty-one, where it said, although a plurality of those familiar maintains a favorable view of Clean Water Services, eighteen percent was unfavorable and forty-one percent had no opinion. If we were a public relations organization, we'd be getting an F. And so I think if I was to put forward a PR campaign, it would be when you flush your toilet, we get it, okay? When it rains really hard, we get it. And that's all you need to know, is that we're taking care of business.
And then it goes back.
And we're environmentally sensitive. And we've got all these wonderful permits and everything else that we take care of and, you know, and oh, by the way, pay your bill.
When we do our job, you don't have to worry about it.
That's exactly right.
If you don't pay your bill, you don't get to flush.
Well, it's what I used to say, the three Bs, the only thing you put down, toilets, the three Bs. And so, yeah, I mean, and we could have fun with that, Jason. We could have a nice.
Pay your bill, don't pack up the system.
But yeah, it's, to me, the, the message here was, we've got some work to do to educate people who, how, how that stuff is processed and what we do with it.
You know, I, I'm sitting here thinking about how I would react to the Portland Water Bureau. Because I'm, you know, here I care a lot about Clean Water Services. I, I think I might, I wouldn't be in the unsure category, but I'd be kind of like, well, everything's working, so, you know, I'm not going to talk about it. So.
Unsure and just don't feel like having an opinion.
Exactly. When it comes to rates, it's a different issue. Do I think that I'm charged fairly? That, that, that starts getting into a, a different position. I'm frankly pleasantly surprised that there wasn't more outrage. I thought maybe, I thought maybe we'd see a bigger spike in that and doesn't seem like that was the case. That, so the other question I'm asking myself is, to your point, Jerry, do we, do we care if they know about the billing? You know, those, I think we have to, we have to determine that ourselves. What is it that we want from this? What would we want our customers? Now, we, we've talked about what the results are, but not where we would want to push it and to what expense we would push it. I think that that's, that's an important part for me.
Well, what I've emphasized on mine was fifty-nine percent of people have no opinion or an unfavorable opinion about Clean Water Services.
And more than.
That's a strong message.
Well, and I'd also say, what percent of our, our bills are paid? It's, it's very high. We don't, my point is that they don't care, but they still pay their bills.
Or they don't have an opinion. Well, it's not like you have an option, you know.
So, so where's, so what do we want out of this? What do we want to, how far do we want to move the needle at what cost?
So I go last because we're, we're getting on time.
So I go last because we're, we're getting on time. So I can tell you what I want. I want them to know that we have a reputation of keeping rates low and reasonable. I don't care about CWS being seen as an environmental leader. Yeah, of course, we take care of the health of the Tuolitan River. I don't have a problem with that. But I think we do need to sell that. Of course, I'm, I'm in the know, right? I've been living in your budgets for seven years. I see how you do the work. I know you've worked hard to keep budgets low and reasonable. I want us to sell that. Love the idea of creativity. You know, we just had a whole big community engagement cycle for the two county levees. And we know CWS, or I recall that CWS has done things at different farmers markets. I enjoy CWS social media. Keep up the great work. And you've heard, yeah, we're open to, you're doing some paid sponsored stuff. This has been great information. I am really grateful that you've done this work and continue to do this work as you have plans. I have two additional comments. I would like you to use this information and these recommendations moving forward. But what I don't know is if you need any board action to bless it as direction, or if you need us to bless an action plan leveraging these recommendations. So please think about that. Because you've been very good about, hey, you're very good about bringing us information, so we're on the journey. But you know, every now and then, it's really valuable to have your board put a thumb on something and say, we're doing this and our board is behind us. Case in point, the easiest one I can give you is when we passed the equity resolution. Our libraries team had been doing things for for Pride Month for years. But once we passed that resolution, all the library directors could then say, this is a policy of the board. That was a new message for them and a very powerful one that helped them. So the second comment I want to make, and I know I'm going to be belaboring the point, sorry. There will be a new board formation in 2027. Boards, it helps boards to have the shared common experience. And I think this is a really good one because it speaks to what does CWS do and how does the community think of it? So you may want to think ahead about as part of your, how does the new board come online and understand what it is CWS does? And have that common experience. So I know you're already thinking about that, but this, I think how you've used, how you've come to us in these dedicated work session, either days or in topics, has allowed this board, as we've had a new member join this year, have these common experiences. Your work, every single type of work you do for us is really excellent. Yet again, another example. So terrific. This has been great. Thank you so much for joining us in person. And feedback is a gift and using your industry best practices to bring us useful, actionable information. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going to take a 15 minute break. It's 10 of 3. We're going to come back at 3:05, which is only five minutes beyond our time.
I'll make it up.
So, no, we'll be fine. Don't worry. Thank you. Chair, I have my green light on and I'm ready, sorry. Okay, everybody, we are back from break. So everybody's mic green light is on. And we're moving on to the board planning and discussion topic. So I want to refer everyone to the board planning tab of our packet. And we have, thanks to the excellent planning work of Elizabeth and Rick and the whole team, we have the plan for the work session days. We have a draft meeting schedule that goes into next year. We have the key dates with regard to the budget. And newly added was the CWS rolling agenda. So without further ado, I'm going to, if you don't mind, Rick, turn it over to you and Elizabeth to see what you would like to highlight.
Thank you so much, Chair. So starting with the first page, behind the board planning tab, you all should be familiar with this CWS board work session planning document discussion draft at this point. A couple of updates for you all. The dates for 2026 should be on your CWS calendar at this point, so the time is is there.
And our staff assistants at Washington County work really well with your team here. So these are, I believe, on our Washington County calendars too. So we're, thanks to your effort, which is why I'm saying it, we're in sync. Although we may not know it yet because some of us, like me, have not really wanted to look at my 2026 outlook calendar yet. There's just eight very busy weeks of business left before the end of the business year.
Thank you. So I will quickly walk through what to expect for February, which is our next CWS board work session day. Hopefully, it will look fairly similar from what we reviewed last time around, but at that point, we had focused largely on November. So as a refresh, we go by topics. So topic one is budget and finance, and you read that across left to right, going forward in time. So under February 6th, we have three financial topics to discuss. That's part of gearing up for budget season, which will occur on May 8. So on February, we have our rate development discussion and a five year forecast. That will be building off of the discussion that we had today around the cost of service study. So hopefully, that will be a nice through line and continuation. You'll also receive a quarterly financial report. Looking into 2026, you'll see this has a, the quarterly financial report has a regular cadence. So we'll just come to expect that as part of these meetings. We'll also have the annual financial report from the CWS Audit Committee.
And this is where Director Willie, I expect you to shine a little bit and give us all the ins and outs on how things went with the Audit Committee.
I'll have the Chair, I'll have the Chair of the Audit Committee do that.
You're a board liaison. Committee, right?
Delegation.
We, we want the board know, what is, we, I want to know from you, what do you think we really need to internal?
All right, I'll be ready.
Chair, he might be delegating.
No, you don't get to delegate your board liaison assignment.
So turning the page, page two, we have permit and compliance as the topic header. In February, we will be getting an overview of compliance, sort of more holistically here at CWS. This was a request from the board to do a a deeper dive on what has fallen under the header of compliance.
And not just the permit, but other.
Outside of the permit largely, yes.
And the design and construction is coming back December 2nd.
Yes, and that that would be.
At a business meeting. So I'm just confirming, I brought last learning of work session day book because you gave us a great primer on the permit cycle and the long term regulatory compliance strategic roadmap. So that what you're putting in this plan is reflecting that stuff. Those intentions. What a difference in a word, stuff versus intentions. My apologies.
That is our intention to reflect all of the various plans. We're trying to capture the stuff. And you'll see, for example, as Director Fine noted, while we will be coming to the board on December 2nd, we will also be providing an update at a CWS board work session day in late July. Next topic areas are trust and credibility and workforce, HR. In February, we do not presently have an item that is explicitly under the header of trust and credibility. We'll have many presentations that touch on that, but are not explicitly calling out items related to RNO 25-5. And we won't be presenting on survey work at that time.
But you might refer, you might put in February, see the rolling agenda. Because we do have some things listed there, so that might be help, just a helpful note. I can make that addition, which could just be a footnote in the whole chart and just put that footnote number or whatever.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because you're working on it.
Yes, we will have.
It's underway.
Yeah.
But the, we've talked previously about being done with the specific action plans under the RNO and then just continuing to do our work beyond that. And so there is an endpoint in my mind from the items in the RNO we're effectuating. We have action steps ahead of us that show up in the multiple tools versus just this one tool. And then we get on with things from there.
Yep. So in, in February, under workforce, we'll be providing an update from our HR and culture teams.
That's usually our annual time, right? Don't we usually do it in February?
That's what we're attempting to do. We did it in July of last year. But with the cadence around budget and preparations, it makes sense to do it in February.
Cool, great.
Final page, last but not least. We have heard from this board repeatedly, a request for updates around roadmaps, goal share and performance excellence. So kind of our, our planning tools and state of affairs. So we'll be providing an update on those in addition to an update on our climate action roadmap, which was going to be today, but as you noticed, today has been a very full day. And so we shifted that out to the February date.
It's a topic that gets shifted out on the county side too.
Yeah. And certainly, last but not least, continuing to hold this sort of quasi roundtable time for board planning and to review our materials. I also want to note at the bottom of the page, we've updated possible travel times. We'll review those in February, but we have the Water Week, WTEC and International Water Association, Water Congress.
Yeah, and it's that April 1, where if we do any further work on travel policy, we need to make sure. Yeah, and I think our, our timing, we talked about that recently.
Yep.
So there are no flags raising here. I would ask, though, usually the Chair goes on the Water Week and maybe some other folks. So I think at some point, no later than at our February 6th one, we should sync up on who's going to DC for Water Week. And then for the September and October, who, waiting till July 31st may be a little late. So we may have to sync up on that at a Thursday, standalone ad hoc work session topic. So that there's enough advanced booking time.
Yeah.
February is too soon, July is too late. Does anybody have any other comments or opinions? Are there any other tours that board members want to see or get in 2026?
Do you remember? I was thinking back when we did a tour in Tigard. Nora was there. It was an outdoor. It was, it was looking at a swale. And from, from that, and it wasn't like a capital investment project, but it was a natural area.
Was it River Terrace?
I think it was. Well, yes.
I know what you're talking about. Yeah, I don't know where it was either, but that was, it was a very cool.
Yeah, that's when Nora tripped.
I don't remember that.
Is this 2019? Because I don't remember.
I'm not sure I was on it or I just forgot it. I I remember the hydro modification, design and construction bus tour we did.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what you're referring to. We did a bus tour. We went to a few stops to look at development, how development was using stormwater facilities.
And Ting, I think the site you were talking at, talking about was telling us more about the sensors.
Oh, that was another tour.
The stream and that there had been problems with the stream next.
The bank eroding into the apartments in Tigard. Yeah, we looked at that and yeah, the tripping was part of that. Yep.
Well, and we also had tours of Tigard around Shoals Ferry Road and the whole, is that Fano Creek area? We had a couple of different ones, not just for the localized flooding at Shoals Ferry, but we went further back in.
Yeah, there was a mayor that was real belligerent at that time. The Beaver Activity.
Yes, yes, that's what I remember.
Yeah, and the overcross or under crossing, overcross.
But we also did one, I know I was there too, so I know we, yeah.
And I don't know that we've ever been as a group to burn, you know.
Yes.
I think you're right, because I remember joining that.
I know I've been there with Congressman Obonamichi.
But I don't think that's.
Well, the other one I'd like us to figure out if we could see, or maybe this is just a particular interest of mine. I don't know that I've ever had to physically go into a pump station. And I know it's not a pleasant experience for field ops. And that's why I was thinking, you know, it may be a dirty job and somebody's got to do it. And I would like to be able to observe what it's like for them to do it. By virtue of the Forest Grove infill and infiltration announcement, I was there for the camera tour with Clean Water Services and whatnot. But the pump stations really came up a lot. There was reference to them with Design and Construction Standard Hydro Modification. That was our year of learning the system, but then COVID happens. And then ice storms happen, so power is a problem. So I just think whether or not we do it in 2026 or you think about it for your new board.
The other one that I just keep to mind was the, the time we went way up the Tuolitan River and we had lunch. That was a, that was a fascinating, really insightful to the headwaters as well.
I've never done that.
Really?
Oh, it was really cool.
I've heard it's great.
Anyway, there's, there's. Anyway, there's, there's interesting opportunities.
July is a great time for that, because the weather generally cooperates.
Well, it also depends on the agenda, too. Yeah, that was one of our roundtable days or our learning days. Yeah. Because TBW, TBID was, and the Soil Conservation Water District, because Dean Lombard was there.
Please roll.
And we went to the Twolton River Farm. So, okay.
I'm hoping a pump station doesn't have some of the same orders as we experienced in Toronto.
Yeah.
Pump station tour is actually great.
So if that's the case, I'm going to have you take good notes.
Videos for you? Hey, sign me up for that. A respirator and all.
Some are deep underground, some are above ground, big electrical panels. Yeah, it's.
Let it never be said, there wasn't anything I wasn't willing to do for you. As long as it'll be a laugh, I'm good.
So continuing to move through the packet, we have the draft meeting schedule as we move into CWS standalone meetings. I was having a sidebar with council around training for the board. We are going to try to find time by the end of the year for training on ORS 451 and 198.
For the end of this year.
Before the end of this year. Now, the question is whether that becomes too tight to begin in January versus February for standalone CWS meetings.
Or what, what was the first ORS?
451. Yeah, so that's around county service districts.
No, 198.
And 198 is the special district, sort of more broad.
Oh, the general special district. Yes, yes.
And if I'm understanding correctly, that was the assignment as far as.
I feel pretty well informed based upon our prior overviews of 451, but not necessarily from a board responsibility perspective, which is what we're trying to make sure we're clear on. It's the 198. That was the total new thing for me. And that's the one where I totally put my foot down and said, we got to do that. Because we have to finalize our rules of procedure as well. So let's try to problem solve that this month and see if we're going to start in January or in February or we'll pick the logical date.
Okay.
But a great list. Thank you.
Yeah, and we've made the adjustments. The dates in red are shifted from the regular second and fourth week cadence due to holidays.
Yep.
The budget calendar should look almost identical to what you received before, but with the amendments around final proposed budget decisions, language that was suggested by the board. So this has just been updated to reflect your comments.
The other learning that I think we want to make sure we highlight here from Washington County is it's important for us to understand, when is that pencils down? Pencils down from departments so that ultimately the CFO and the CEO can break, put together a proposed budget. It's good to give us a feel for that. You don't have to do it right now, but I think you'll want to let us know, when is your pencils down? That's the phrase that you pencils down from the departments. That's all.
Rick, is that March 13?
March 13. Yeah.
It doesn't say pencils down, but I'm interpreting.
Numbers walk, so.
Yeah, but I thought that's, you have to have all your numbers, the final, final, final versus what departments are recommending to you.
Oh, that happens. The department numbers, I would think.
That's, that's what is pencils down for the department. Because then the C O has to make the super hard decisions.
Yep.
So that I'm asking for the pencils down from departments, not your pencils down.
It's early June, but we can clarify exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Well, pick one of those dates. Yes, yep. Yep. And so we assume that you've got the direction that you need from us. I mean, we've given you a lot of direction this year. But if it's necessary, if you feel the need to affirm any direction from us as you work with us, organization, on clarity from the board, you know, with back to basics, the normal rate scrubbing, let us know. Okay?
Chair says here, January 30th, operating budgets due from department. Is that your pencils down?
Yeah, there's two pencils down. That's the operating budget. And then there's the C I P.
Which is January.
So he said he'd get back to us.
Last but not least, we have our CWS rolling agendas. These came in a little bit later to you all so that we could get the most up to date information. With that said, there are still, there are always little tweaks and adds that are happening through this.
So we've got the board meeting evening of 6:30 PM. We know that Commissioner Snyder is going to try to zoom in. We know you have a quorum of at least three of us. And then Commissioner Willie is away on vacation. Director Willie, I'm sorry, I just can't see. Get with it today. And then here I am, just still internalizing, we're in November, and now we're moving on to December.
I'm, I'm also out of office the 25th.
No worries there. Your chair is local.
So on December 2, we have, it's not on here presently, but we should have Design and Construction Standards under our board action.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, so tentatively have adoption of CWS board rules and procedure. Coordinate with the county around timing and around training. So that may need to shift.
Yeah. I think those two need to play off of one another. So why don't we just assume? Yeah, you've already got it marked tentative, so you understand our need. That's great.
Otherwise, more.
Can we ask about the approved, the BUG I G A? So you guys are staying in the BUG? I think Washington County either already exited the BUG or transitioning out of the BUG, or I, my colleagues might remember. I don't remember all the details.
So I've had conversations with John Shaw Digital Solutions on this. It, we're not satisfied with the I G As. It's written, there is a plan that we are probably going to eventually be out of the BUG, but it may not be right now.
Okay. Okay, but is this just a tentative on the I G A or, okay, yeah. And you're really good about bringing the items to us on consent. We, we take advantage of, you know, the information you give us on those. And I, and we know how to ask questions, so.
Just let us know when you want a presentation on polymer flocculants and we'll, we'll make it happen.
I didn't have to learn that as a board member. Flocculant just was not in my vocabulary.
And sooner, sooner versus later.
We could have. We could have a fun exercise of developing a vocab list that your new board members are going to have to learn.
I got to learn about that during water treatment and Tigard, but.
But we may have new, you may have new board members that are new to public agency work totally. So it might be kind of a good, they've punched their ticket.
Over their tenure.
Well, I don't know about the test part, but just as an indication. They've, they've been, it's kind of like the passport for board members, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah. So you'll see where late in January, this will get filled in. But per your commentary, we have the forensic presentation on the forensic investigation, which is the last large piece of the RNO scheduled for January.
Could you give some, board members, here's a potential discussion topic. We might want to give some thought as to how we close one chapter using an analogy, closing one chapter and continuing on with writing the book. I don't know. I, it's not a celebration per se, but it's just, yes, and I'm recognizing you've done the work, we've done what we said, promises made, promises kept. I'm not suggesting that's the phrase we use. Just that kind of ilk. And, and here we consciously continue our strong culture of.
I think I, I agree. And I, I also think it's important in relationship to building trust is having that public statement that we've been through the forensic investigation. We've got the final recommendations and we're moving forward.
We continue to maintain and strengthen beyond that. Yep. Think about that.
Yeah.
Chew on it and let us know. Where, board, are you open to it?
Sure.
Yep. Great.
So Chair and board members, I want to give you a preview. I've been talking with Stephen Roberts. We want to do a kind of joint work session in January about our I G A negotiations.
Oh, between the county and CWS?
It'll be a joint update from Stephen and my team.
Yeah.
In January. We haven't picked a date yet.
And also, could you, in some communication, let us know how many more I G As are still in the pipeline? That would be great. I know Kathy still has an A R to fix this brain about. Can't remember the topic now. There's some.
Captain Leader?
Yes.
Today?
Yeah, I remembered it again today. Oh, yes, yes. Retiring to Build America Bonds. Yeah.
You will, there is an update coming. I've seen the draft.
Not to worry. I know good things happen. Are there any other topics, board members, where you feel like you just need, it could be an email, a memo versus a work session topic? Anything that's sticking in your brain? Then I would say you guys have really helped us a lot make highest and best use of our time and continue to be an effective Board of Directors. And if there's something more, Rick, you and your team may need from us. There's a reason why we like to have this topic here. So you have us as a work group to check in with as well. So let me be proactive and ask, is there anything more you would like us to either think about or start integrating into our plans? Like in 2026, do you still want me to have office hours here a couple of times a month? Or are you sick of me and I'm booted out? Picking fun, picking fun.
Raising the rent. Absolutely. Although there may be some construction at some points in time, but no, it's been, I've been really happy with the outreach from the board. Whenever I've asked for help, I've always gotten it. Good feedback today. I got some good highlighted notes here. In particular, I like the idea of really messaging the rates. We, I feel really passionate that the district does an awesome job with that. And so getting that message out there, I think is going to be extra important as we're doing budget season. I'm curious how to get in front of the budget more often with the board. You know, we came in at the end last year and I, I know there's, I think I've heard some interest in having more data, more data kind of ahead of time on how things are going. But I don't quite have that figured out on what I need yet until we start to sort of get into, into the process, but.
One of the check-ins that we did or that's kind of forced is on the county side is really around budget adjustments that are needing to be done on a quarterly basis. And I, we, is that just not necessary?
Supplemental budget?
Yeah. I mean, we don't, I don't, unless I'm missing it, maybe just one hasn't happened, but I don't see a sort of quarterly supplemental budget date by other commissioners or other directors. So I, I get, Rick, that's where we have a touch in or a touch point at a minimum in our other work. And I'm not sure if that's just not necessary for a regulatory reason, or if there aren't enough changes, or, you know, what makes that not necessary? But it, given the size of the organization, it's mildly surprising.
Yeah.
I think, Jason, from my standpoint is the county does that because we have so many special funds.
Yeah.
And so we can't be exact on every one of those things, whereas.
And a lot of grant funding and things that change.
CWS function is actually more like a private sector business. I mean, we put, they put together the budget, they maintain operations.
There's a couple of funds.
Yeah, so it's not as much activity.
But it doesn't give us an opportunity. I mean, that's sort of the built-in check-ins we have on the county side. I guess I'm suggesting that.
There could still be, how are we doing, you know, we do that internally, but I don't think we have done that. How are we doing on our C I P with the spending? You know, are we ahead? Are we behind?
You could do that with the, with the quarterly financial.
Yeah.
You have natural milestones built in there. But as you were talking, I had to flip back to the cost of services slides because February 6, it doesn't show up. Oh, yeah, it does. On February 6, not only do we get the utility rate increases, but at some point Kathy talked about the forecast. And I can't remember now. I wrote it down in my notes on one of these slides. But I can't remember where she talked about the forecast. And I'm trying to find that word here on the key dates on the CWS Proposed Budget Calendar. So that you might want to refine that page for us because we want in, on the county side, right? They've mentioned the supplemental budgets, but we just spent a lot of time yesterday at our Board Work Session Day on the forecast and building the guiding principles and priorities. And so in our, with that hat on, forecast, forecast, forecast has been drilled into us. So I think that's a little bit of, how are things trending? Kathy does that with the quarterly updates. You talked about adding in on the capital improvement plan. We also, on the county side, we we have the critical facilities construction that's been really important. So we've, we've moved from a monthly memo briefing memo. We get to a quarterly one and Ober sent that recently. So I think just knowing where that forecast plays in might help us.
And Chair, you know, when I reflect back, I think we've had updates along the way when there's been inflection points. I remember talking about when the, when the cost of chemicals really spiked. We had, that was brought up and it was talked about in relationship to the budget and what adjustments had to be made there. But to Jason's point, we had, it. But to Jason's point, we, it, it's not a regularly scheduled.
As need, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And it's usually when it, it looks like there's going to, it's always when it has been, when there's going to be an aberration, when there's going to be something missed, when we're not going to be able to be on target.
We should get more into our regular cadence, in my opinion.
I, I would like that, honestly. I think that would be helpful.
And I don't, and I don't think it needs to be every month. Like, I don't think there's a big lift. I just think it's like, we need to do it.
So that was the one thing on my mind.
So, but taking this thought of on a more regular basis, we, we get year weekly already. And so you might choose monthly or quarterly to have a section there. Or what we're used to on the county side is we get these briefing memos and briefing opportunities. What we're asking for is common board availability. So you already have in these three times a year work session days slots for financial, right, with the fourth being the budget day. So it's really just that quarter, you already have a quarterly cadence, so.
Yeah.
You could, you could do it during, during the financial part of the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Based on a.
Sort of all things financial, not just from the CFO.
Correct.
Yeah. Am I, am I on the right?
You are, yeah, we are there.
So Chair, if I could just also ask, we just got this information about the CEO GM selection stuff today.
Yeah.
If we.
We're going to, we're going to sync back up on that.
So, but, but who would I, because I'm going to read this, obviously, while I'm sitting someplace warm. And who would I communicate that?
We're.
It's before I have the margarita, it's perfectly legit.
So we're going to need to bring that whole plan and feedback back at some kind of CWS work session topic in likely December. So it's going to need to happen before the February 6th. So because we've sketched out a plan already, but it was before we had this informational gift and before we've had a chance to work with the now secured reptiles on what a recruitment plan would look like and, and really spend time as a board because we're the key audience and how are these logistics going to work out for us? How do we want this process to work with additional travelers, you know, so on and so forth? So, yeah. What, what you're used to are doing as a board for recruitments, we need to keep doing because we also have to take action on a job description. Stay tuned while you're catching vitamin D rays, we're going to be working on that.
And, and that will likely be a CWS standalone, perhaps, discussion?
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Anything else, colleagues? For wrap-up colleagues, two things. One is how did this day work out for staff? And then we'll go around the room with the board.
I, I think it worked out, it worked well. We got done on schedule, so that's always, I think we were efficient in the time, hopefully. Thanks for helping with time management pieces. I'm a little quiet on the, the work that you're doing for criteria. I hope you understand why. I don't want to get too vocal on that.
You're not on point for that, we are.
Yeah, so just, just making that.
Understood, noted.
Yeah, it's appropriate.
But I appreciate, you know, being invited in. I liked the conversation about GM, DGM, just so I do. I've heard a lot of what was, was said in there, but I'm real curious to hear. I would love to hear from the board. You know, there was a mention, there was a few surprises or things and kind of using that report for the recruitment, but also what can we be doing right now with how staff are feeling? I think is the one thing I was really happy to be able to kind of see some of that. And I feel like we're, we're taking strides, but we can, you know, always do, do better for, for staff in that respect. But, yeah, you've had a, thanks for a long day on a Friday after, I know you had a long day yesterday and staying engaged and giving us some really good high level points and feedback.
Well, Elizabeth, you and Rick, I know, spent a lot of time putting this together. Do you think the logistics worked pretty well from what you'd hoped?
Yes, thank you. And it's, this is the first time maybe ever that we have done a back-to-back from one month to the next. So the turnaround time and production schedule for staff was a lot to help produce this. And this is a hefty binder.
It is.
So I also want to give a shout out to all of our quiet folks.
Yeah.
Over there. It took a lot of hours, not just to get the, the content to where we got it and always appreciate the feedback on how to continue to up our game. But to do all of the coordination and detail working, you'll notice we have a different configuration in the room. We are constantly trying to make the space work better, be more accessible, have better content. But doing things differently and in trying to improve on that every time and iterate, that takes a little bit more energy and effort and creativity. So thank you for your, your patience and grace through that. And also just, again, a huge thank you to our, our staff that have helped us to get to this point.
I think logistically, the only improvement I think we should consider is seeing how we can consolidate the speaker set, the presenter set and the board visibility so that, I mean, if you look at the Zoom, that's too tiny. It needs to be closer. And in order for it to be closer, we need to have a more focused, the presenters and the board. Right? We can have other people sitting here from staff, but this needs to be the focus set. Really appreciate the material that's here. I know I've tried to project, which makes me feel like I'm being loud. I know I've talked a lot, don't worry, I acknowledge that. But also being very clear with my words, right? Projecting in that intention of clarity. No, nobody's been nailed at all. It's great. Keep it up. So I did check in with the folks in the back of the room earlier and there were times where we weren't projecting enough. Got to use our big voices, big room voices. Yeah, I think it's great. Okay. Any, any last comments? Thank you, as always, for having the means to order and secure lunch as well. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate the building, far more comfortable than at the ABC, whatever it was, room that was cold, cold, cold.
And no bugs.
And no bugs. Yes, yes. Okay, without further ado, we're hereby adjourned.